I'd like to see if somebody wanted to come to this tonight, but then.
Yeah.
Comments, I'll read that sort of comments.
Yeah.
That way we're not reconstituting and going through that.
Just need to know who I'm gonna call on.
We're gonna do courtesy after, and I'm gonna tell.
And there's only this one joker here, so.
Right, okay. All right.
Well, exactly, yeah. Because he pulled him, because he went for the mass planning commission.
You gotta leave early.
Right. Hope he's burning something.
Yeah.
Jack Rose.
What are the things I have, but it's.
Because if you don't authorize the loan, the rest of this doesn't mean anything.
The way this is set up, the first one is this bill authorizing a loan from the Lafarge Fund. It's sort of backwards. If we do that, I mean, I know we can retract that, but if this doesn't pass, then what's the point of doing this? So can I switch these up?
I should make sure.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You can re-advertise them, you can do it in a different order.
Because this is an ordinance and this is a resolution.
It doesn't make sense to follow.
I know that's not normally the way you'd normally do the ordinance, just first, but I don't, there's no legal problem as long as they advertise it. All right. And I, you could also, you could also discuss them all before you call for a vote. Okay, yeah, because instead of doing courtesy of the floor upfront, we're gonna do it after each item.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Be fine.
You could just, I'm looking at our comprehensive plan. Right. Okay.
Well, is it not, is the last one?
Well, I don't know what the last one is.
The, the last one there is for, uh, for grants for the, down on Copley Creek Road and Belmont Glen.
That's for the outfall at Belmont Glen.
Yeah, that's to apply for the grant.
For, for the grant money for there and for down, uh, Pride and Far, right?
I, I'm confused. I thought phase two was the Copley Creek.
Yeah, it is.
Phase three is, now is this to apply, well, I'll ask the question.
Now.
You think it's for the grant down there to do along the water?
I'm not gonna ask for a motion before this is discussed, am I?
You don't have to.
Okay. We're gonna discuss it and then ask for motions. Okay, all right, okay.
Or that's with the Army Corps of Engineers and so is Belmont.
Right. Right, okay.
Yeah.
We'll do this one. I am bringing the June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners special meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for our first responders, the people of Ukraine and our men and women in uniform.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Whitehall Township has an obligation to affirmatively further fair housing and to review all land use applications in accordance with civil rights statutes. This includes taking meaningful actions that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protected characteristics. The township and its land use decisions does not discriminate against persons based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, disability, or familiar status, and reviews all land use applications in accordance with federal civil rights statutes. Public comments made on the basis of bias and stereotype concerning people within these protected classes will not be taken into consideration by the township and its deliberations. We're gonna switch things up here a little tonight. We're gonna move item D up first before item C, because to vote on the ordinance authorizing a loan from the Lafarge Fund doesn't make any sense, because we have to get through this resolution accepting the partnership between Lehigh County, the township, for the purchase of the agricultural conservation easement. So we're gonna start with that, and then I'm gonna take courtesy of the floor after each issue. That way the public can inter, interact and we can discuss things. So, public hearing and voting on resolutions. Resolution number thirty-two sixty-six. Resolution acknowledging the municipal partnership between the county of Lehigh and the township of Whitehall for the purchase of agricultural conservation easements in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, specifically the Weinhofer Farm, Farmland Preservation Easement. Any questions from the board? I'm not gonna do a motion right away. We're gonna have a discussion first and then we'll do a motion after all comments are made.
I have some questions. So, just kind of a point of order, you know, we're having a special meeting here after last month's main meeting. Why is that?
Because there was a timeline for advertising reasons, and we could not meet the advertising deadlines in order to hold it during our regular meeting workshop.
I understand that. Is there a reason this couldn't have?
I believe there's a timeline, correct, Mayor?
Uh, we did it because we thought there was a timeline, um, and when we could meet that would be then. Uh, subsequently, I think we found that there may be, it may not have been as dire as it was.
Hold on, can we get an understanding of the timeline and why? What was the timeline issue that was?
We couldn't meet the deadline.
Let's make sure in the future, like, you know, we have a better grasp on these things, because this is a special meeting. We had a full meeting last week and I just.
Fortunately, a lot of times even the morning call has advertising requirements, and in this case, the ordinance wouldn't have met those time requirements.
Okay, fair enough.
For advertising, or we would have done that.
Right.
Any more questions from the board? Would you like to make the presentation, Lehigh County?
I certainly can.
Okay.
Do you want me to come up?
Yes, please. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Donna White. I work for Lehigh County Farmland Preservation for Lehigh County, and I'm here to answer any and all questions, but also probably to answer some of the questions that Commissioner Fisher had. The reason why we're concerned about this is we have some timelines for the owner of the property. Originally, as everyone knows, the Yestishack property, you know, by the developer, and fortunately, he was, uh, the interested farmer, Mr. Weinhofer was able to strike a deal with him, uh, strike off a whole lot of money that the man was asking for for the property. Uh, in doing that, they settled on the farm in Easter. And our concern is we have the funding now through Lehigh County. Uh, we are willing to pay six thousand an acre for the preservation of this farm. The appraisal of this farm came in at over thirteen thousand an acre for preservation. So, uh, in trying to get Mr. Weinhofer some relief from the, uh, huge mortgage that he is paying and the desire to have this property preserved, as I hope that you guys are, as well as, uh, our department is, we would like to try and get this settled by December. And in doing that, we need to move some things along. One thing that we've never had with Whitehall, and I'm pretty excited that we hopefully can do this, is to have this resolution that acknowledges the fact that we're gonna work together to try and get this property preserved. And, uh, as I said, we're putting six thousand dollars out there on the line per acre. Right now, the farm isn't surveyed yet, because we haven't gone through all of this paperwork and this background, uh, stuff that we have to have in order first. So I, we're estimating it a hundred and fifty-five acres. Could be a little more than that, could be a little less than that, whatever it is. Um, if this goes through, you guys say yes, you would like to put in whatever your funding amount is. We put in our funding amount. Uh, Mr. Weinhofer says yes, he likes that, and we sign the agreement of sale. All right, before we sign the agreement of sale, um, we'll pay to have a survey done. So everybody officially knows what the borders are, where, how much the acreage is, and then that's when an agreement of sale is written up. So I hope that helps with some of the timing. On top of that, by sale law, preservation of farmland is done under the Ag Security Act, and one thing that is required by the state is that every farmland that is preserved has to be under agricultural security. Right now, your township has two parcels, maybe three parcels in the entire township, under Ag Security. And we could not find the paperwork between any of us that said that there was any kind of agreement. In order, and let me back up. In order to have an Ag Security area, a township has to have over five hundred acres of farms that are interested, or you can share with another township that already has an Ag Security area. So further down the line, there's acceptance of Whitehall to be an Ag Security area with North Whitehall. North Whitehall has an official Ag Security area. They have a commission. They've had it for many years since nineteen ninety, and they are more than happy to have you guys go, we have a farmer that's come in, they wanna play for Ag Security area. We say, you guys say, hey, we got it. Guess what? Now it goes to North Whitehall and they take care of all the paperwork. Um, it's a fairly simple process. It can sit on the desk from the minute that it's accepted in the township uh, for a hundred and eighty days. After a hundred and eighty days is over, the township goes, it's an Ag Security area now because we did nothing about it. By law, it's an automatic acceptance. So that's also part of the timeline that we're looking at, to get this in an Ag Security area as well. So there's a lot of moving parts, and that's where we're trying to push it ahead. So we apologize for anything that may be out of sorts as far as timing is concerned. Okay, an Ag Security area, um, is a protection for the farmer. Uh, it is, uh, when land is in Ag Security area, it stops the municipality from, uh, processing any, uh, ordinances and, uh, land use ordinances that may be going abridges of the Right to Farm Act, the Acre Act. It also stops some condemnation from being able to happen from school districts, uh, some minor, uh, road things that may have to come in. It does not stop utilities from going through. Uh, it also stops neighbors from being able to complain to the cops that he's out farming at eleven o'clock at night, or corn husks happen to be rolling across their manicured lawn. It is a right to farm. It is a protection for the farmer. So that's the big thing for that.
Oh, is that, is it in perpetuity?
Ag Security area, um, no, the Ag Security area is a free application for the landowner. Um, it's the cost of the recording for the township. In this case, it would be North Whitehall who would actually take that expense for you, since they're going to do all the paperwork. Um, and if, for instance, it was not preserved property, okay, if it was just a standard farm, and the landowner decided they wanted to sell it for homes, it's a removal from the Ag Security area by the landowner or by the municipality, um, by ordinance, which is how it goes into the Ag Security area. Unfortunately, across the state, including Lehigh County, there's an awful lot of properties out there that probably have housing developments on them now that are under Ag Security area that shouldn't be, and our office right now is in the process of trying to clean that up. But that's not of a concern. It's, so it doesn't take away any of the property owner's rights. It is never, yeah, it has to be in an Ag Security area before you can be reserved, okay? But we have, we like to, it happens a lot. We try and run both processes sort of, uh, uh, coincide with each other. They, they are both happening at the same time. We're letting the application process go through for the Ag Security area, while we're also processing all the paperwork that needs to be done for preservation.
So, how does that work? And again, this is from way long ago. If the owner of the property wants to subdivide a little bit for one of their children, is that allowed or not?
If he's, if the property is only under Ag Security, yes. If the property is now preserved through the easement program, no. It is one hundred percent preserved except for one additional home that may be built on the property. And the location of that home has to not only follow your rules and regulations, but also has to follow ours, which is a maximum of two acres, including the driveway, and our agricultural board actually helps them figure out where the house can go, because the whole purpose is not to take up your best ag land. So, yeah, you might have a pretty view in the middle of the cornfield on the hill, but that's not where we're going to allow you to put the house. We're gonna say it needs to be down in the woods. It needs to be down near the edge. It needs to be closer with a maximum of two acres being disturbed. So that is all that would ever be able to be built on this farm should it be preserved.
That is forever. It's not like, okay, now it goes over to my child and from there, now I'll have my, one of my children build another house. Okay, it's just one, that's it.
And it's run through by deed, and, um, now as a landowner, Mr. Weinhofer could turn around and sell it to anybody who he wanted to, but that preservation easement, uh, deed remains permanently with the deed of the property and runs all the way through. Um, there can be some subdivision. It has to be approved through our state farmland preservation board before it even came to you, to see if it would be liable or not. Even if it's subdivided, there's still only one home and one home only that's ever allowed. So you can conceivably have, say the farm gets divided into two, you could conceivably have a house on one section and never ever have a house on the other section. And that's happens frequently.
Talk about like, you know, forever. Forever's a long time. So, so you know, the generations passed by, the land. Really wants to have this thing subdivided, developed.
Too bad, so sad. Um, we've already, sorry, we've already gone through that process. It is supported by the state legislation. It's also supported by the state, uh, legal department. So we're not sitting out here on our own, being the only people who are, um, enforcing it. It is enforced through. We've had folks come to us and go, oh, listen, we kept out this five acres over here. We didn't want preserved. But now the grandkids have come and gone, hey, we own the property now, and we don't really want this piece preserved or, or this piece out. We, we would prefer to have our house over here, so can we swap it? And the answer is absolutely not. Part of this easement, because of the survey, the description matching that survey, the same as it is for any deed, is part of the deed of easement. So what you guys are, are purchasing in perpetuity is that specific description of land. So it cannot be swapped out. It cannot be changed, and it is supported completely up through, uh, and it's written right into the law. This will be permanent. This will be in, in perpetuity. Uh, years ago, and this is what gets people kind of a little hinky. New Jersey had done the same thing about preserving farmland, and about ten years into the program, they go, guess what? The developers need to build, and we've changed our mind, and now we're gonna buy this preserved land back. And it left a really bad taste in everybody's mouth. So the way the language that Pennsylvania put together is, it cannot be swapped out. It cannot be changed. Yes, it has been tested in court. This has been, uh, it was founded in nineteen eighty-eight. The first farm in Lehigh County was preserved in nineteen ninety, and across the state it has been. Pennsylvania is the number one state in the United States for the preservation of their farmland, because they've always prided themselves on their agriculture, and this was one way to preserve it, because we're also a commonwealth, as you guys know. It means every use everywhere for in every township. And because of sprawl and all of that, that's what really inspired folks, uh, legislation back in the mid-eighties to start this process. So it has been tested, to your point. Lancaster's had folks come through, uh, Adams County's had folks that come through a fight. We've had some folks come through who've tried to squat on farmland, for lack of a better term, and they've had to pay the farmer and removed their stuff from the farmland that they've squatted on. So there's, it, it's been tested in court. And some people have, uh, tax, I don't know, if you guys, three fifteen, or three nineteen or five fifteen, which were like tax rebates on big parcels of land. Um, but that, some people go, well, I'm preserved. I'm in three nineteen. No, that just means you don't wanna pay the seven years back taxes to the county that's owned. Okay, you're not really preserved. Most, all farms are in three nineteen or five fifteen, but they then also, if they're preserved, they have this additional recorded deed of easement that gets attached to the property deeds. Um, in, you guys are not part of Act Four in your school district. So the property is just, uh, assessed the same as it has been. Um, we find some of the taxes may be a little less, but the sale of preserved farmland has been on par with even farm, uh, even property that can be developed. So, there's a thing, uh, the state passed which was called Act Four, which if you could get all three taxing bodies to agree, they froze the land taxes at the rate that the land was at when it was being preserved. But you have, Lehigh County allows that, but your school, school district, and obviously you guys don't have that, because you don't have any preserved farms until this possible. No, it wouldn't, because you guys haven't passed Act Four as being sealed. So he would still, whatever your tax rate heights would be on property would still be followed through, unfortunately, for Jack. My farm is in Lowermore, Kentucky. Mine's frozen at the, at the rate that it was when we preserved it four or five years ago. And the first farm, as I said before, in Lehigh County was preserved was in, matter of fact, it's a neighbor of mine, and, uh, their taxes are a quarter of anybody else around them, because that was frozen at the time when they were preserved. Which is kind of nice for that property owner.
One fifty, one hundred and fifty-five acres, is that specific to the Yestishack trust?
For right now, it is just the Yestishack, not the Land. Um, we're bugging Jack, because he's surrounded by it, by three sides to do his, but he's not doing that this year. Um, we may do that in a year or two, but that's, that's my conversation with him later. Now, I believe we do have it, though, under the application for the Ag Security area, just because we're putting it in and we wouldn't have to put it in again. Kind of saving a step. Yeah, that's not, that's not, because I didn't understand.
Now, I understand why this is different. I just have a question about North Whitehall. I know they're doing this out of the goodness of their heart. Legally, that doesn't have.
No. Uh, what I, what we need from you guys is what you were talking about later, which is the resolution to acknowledge the acceptance of Ag Security areas and that you're going to share it with North Whitehall. North Whitehall already did that last month for me, because I was trying to help move things along a little bit, and they were like, sure, no problem. So they, they've already signed that.
Do their supervisors have to approve that through?
Yes, they already did.
Okay. Uh, second question I have. If there's a transfer of the property, if there's proceeds, if there's profit, how exactly is that handled? I mean.
It's handled between the owner and whoever they have.
Okay.
Once we, once, uh, we pay for an easement, that's it. We're out of it. What it does give, uh, your municipality the rights to do, and, and what we do, is we inspect it every other year to make sure that it is being handled for ag, that is being handled for ag. If there's any kind of issues that you guys might see as far as, okay, um, Jack does something really foolish and all of a sudden there's gullies that show up because he plowed something, um, that comes back to Conservation District and it comes back to us. You can come to us and go, hey, you guys need to go out and talk to, talk to the farmer, because he's not doing what he's supposed to be doing. Um, so any of those kind of questions and those kind of regulations is handled through our office. So, you know, you put the money in, what you guys are getting out of it is knowing that that is going to remain open space, not houses. You're preserving your, um, watershed, because what, you know, farming is fine. It helps protect the watershed. The woodlands are going to remain there. That's what you're, you're really getting out of it.
So basically, the property owner has mineral rights, water rights.
Correct.
They, they, they have all the rights that they would have as an owner of a property.
Correct.
And if there's any prof.
Within, within the guidelines of the, uh, agreement of sale.
And if there's any profits made above and beyond when they decide to sell, or whatever it may be, or inherit, it, it's, it's theirs.
And of course, if they sell it for more, then of course you guys are gonna get more taxes too. So all the same things that you would with any land property.
That's a really stupid question.
No stupid questions.
No, trust me. Mineral rights.
Yes.
Do we have to worry about a quarry being sunk there?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely not. Not with, that's what I said, within the guidelines of the agreement of sale. And I apologize for not having given you guys one to take a look at to see. The agreement of sale that we would be using, um, would be for county and township. It's just gonna be county and township. However, the agreement was drafted by the state office, the state legal office. So there's a mandatory form that, uh, I have to fill out, and it just depends on what the funding is, which form I use. We can't change any of the wording in it. What it does say is what municipality may be involved, what percentage of, uh, ownership you have of the easement. Um, and, uh, lack is kind of lying, but the language is the language.
So if all of a sudden, like, you know, Jack Weinhofer is shooting for some crude, no, shooting for some food, it all comes up as a thing of crude.
Head up on the ground, that's a bubbling crude, yeah, yeah. Uh, no, uh, okay, there's things that, uh, no. No, no, fair enough, fair enough. Don't shoot rabbits, Jack.
I'd ask.
Have a family from Kentucky, I understand.
Ask another question on that, similar to like the land transfer. This land as a preserved in perpetuity farmland, is the value of this land best compared to what it would be if it was to be developed?
We have, I was just saying earlier, is we've not found that to be true. Um, it really depends on what's going on in the world as far as real estate is concerned. Um, right now, uh, Jack and the family turn it, uh, turn around and have, uh, I hate to say the word, Dave Jans will pick it up, but that's because he needs to be growing feed for his turkeys. He, he needs thirty-five hundred acres to grow feed for his turkeys. He has probably about eighteen hundred to two thousand acres of preserved land right now, and what he's done is just buy, uh, purchased previously preserved farms.
I mean, like this use versus like a different use. All of a sudden, if this land could not necessarily be a preserved property, would the value of it all of a sudden increase, because another use could be utilized?
Once it is preserved, that is the use. I, no, 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 let, let me, let me see if I can. See if I can explain this. Um, right now, its value, um, with rotation marks, is open to debate. Okay, it all depends on what you guys are going to allow to happen. It all depends on what someone may want to put on it. Uh, if you're asking if a warehouse or, or development is going to give it higher value, that would only occur should you guys decide in your zoning ordinance or whatever else that you would allow that to happen. Um, by keeping it, by having it preserved and having it agricultural land, even the price of preserved agricultural farms and farm land has steadily grown. So at this point in time, it's only a couple of thousand less per acre than the value of a developable land would be. Okay, so, I mean, when you're considering that the appraisal showed the value right now for preservation at being over thirteen thousand dollars per acre, and if it wasn't preserved, the value was nineteen thousand dollars per acre, that's really not too much of a increase in value, all things considered, okay? So that's just right now. But we have had other farms that have sold that are preserved, and they have sold for twice as much per acre as what they were preserved for or for what the surrounding land is going for, because as someone who's interested in purchasing a preserved farm, likes the idea that it's preserved, likes the idea they're not gonna get harassed and all that kind of thing. The other thing as far as use is concerned, um, no solar farms are allowed on preserved farmland. Okay, so Jack can't turn around and say he's gonna make the big bucks by having a solar farm come in. That's not allowed on preserved land. It ain't a farm. No. Only within the use of the farm itself. If he decided that he need whatever electric use that he needed, he can generate the electric that he needs on his farm, on his farm. The same as a limited number of solar panels. He could also do a windmill of that. Commercial, no, that's not allowed. It's farming. Um, he is allowed to build any agricultural building that he wishes within a maximum of ten percent of the total acres. Uh, so he's a hundred and fifty-five acres. He could put fifteen acres of roof on there. But if that's by our ordinance, uh, by our easement, he would have to come to us and say, hey, I'm gonna build this, and we go out and look to see where he's putting it and what he's doing, and he still has to follow all of your rules and regulations concerning buildings as well. So he's got, he's gotta play, he's gotta watch the book. So, he's got, he's gotta play, he's gotta watch the both of us at the same time. And you can say, no, uh, you know, this is too big or something else is going on. Okay? But you have to start watching though, in the right to farm toes, who you may be stepping on at that point, as far as the township is concerned. His maximum of ten acres, simply because we preserved Dan Shant's greenhouse property back in the mid nineties. At the time, Dan Shant's farm was only forty-five acres, we preserved it. And within the next year, he turned around and put forty acres of that under greenhouse. Well, if you're putting it under greenhouse, it is agriculture, but you're not preserving the agricultural soils, which is a whole part of the program. So, Lehigh County said ten percent is the maximum that you can cover. And Dan had to go and buy more land and add it to his farm.
But if he purchased the Yashersack, if he purch- purchased the additional, the surrounding, that would increase his, his square footage or whatever he would-
It could, yes.
Or his acreage.
It could. If he had the money, he wanted to do that.
Now, marijuana growing facilities, is that if-
You guys know, you've already gone through the ordinance for that, that's highly regulated as far as it's concerned as to what you're growing. It is allowed as a specialty crop for us. But again, that may be something that the state is regulating itself. Medical marijuana is something completely different than say just open field hemp. We had an o, uh, two acre? Five acre, five acre parcel. This is not a preserved land, but just as a, as a thing, five acres of hemp that was grown, um, over in Upper Hanover in Montgomery County. And I know it only because it's about a mile and a half from my house. And boy, you could smell that when you drove by. It was really pretty scary. And they didn't end up being able to maintain that for more than a year. It didn't bring in the money that they were anticipating. So, you don't see that really happening across the state at all. The money's in the medical, not in the other. I hate to say that.
Question. You mentioned greenhouse. As it stands now, he can develop that, uh, uh, a major-
Fifteen acres, max.
Without it being, without it be, without the preservation, he can go bigger.
Correct, yes, correct, yeah. I don't know what your regulations are, right. But right now, if he was preserve fifteen acre roof coverage would be the max that he could do. Okay, so, again, it's one hundred and fifty-five acres and that would be the max that you would see. And we keep track of that, okay? We're doing it by aerials, we're doing it by onsite visits. We do it by his application process for the buildings that come in. And again, all of those inspections for the buildings themselves, that falls under you guys.
Would, would it increase the assessed value if he built structures on the property?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, permitting and things like that.
They, they, they agree with the county and the school board, I'll go, hey, hey, more buildings. I know that we have a preserved land, uh, farmland in Upper Salkin. He's a horse facility, he put in an indoor. And boy, he came crying to us because all of a sudden his taxes jumped by ten thousand dollars. And that's because he put up this huge gorgeous indoor and he has to pay extra taxes because of the building value. Again, that's gonna fall under your regulations. What is allowed for the, in the municipality for what they're calling agritourism these days, okay? For instance, Grims, I'm sure everybody's kinda familiar with those over, I think it's Lower Mac or, I don't think it's Upper Mac.
Topper Mac.
It's Upper Mac. What they have over there, they cannot be preserved right now. Because that is too much of gobbledygook, it isn't really, uh, agriculture. Okay? So, he would have to fall under your regulations or, you know, you're going to allow. Again, we got a preserved farm that just came into my municipality, they wanna put on a horse show. They had to go in front of the zoning hearing board and go through all of that kinda process before they could be okay to do the horse shows that they wanted to do. Okay, it's allowed under my program, but the municipality is the one who regulates a lot of that. They're also entitled to be able to do rural enterprise, but it can only be a very limited amount. It shouldn't, it can't disrupt the aesthetics or the use of the farm. So, you know, should he decide to do a tractor repair business in his barn, he could do that, but he can't be spreading it out all over. And you guys may not allow that because of a business as- aspect. So, you know, he, he, whoever owns a preserved farm is kinda having to play with both of us at the same time. Doesn't drop you guys out of being able to regulate stuff.
Other questions from the board?
Sure, if you'd like. We got a bunch of documents this afternoon about some of the deeds.
Um, well, so-
I read them, but I'm still a little... What, what did I read?
I, simply from the county website, pulled the deed for the properties that were recently acquired, plus the two deeds to the other two properties that are, that the request is to put them in the Ag Security. Six total pins. And I, they're on three, three deeds, six pins on three deeds. See the deeds, so I pulled them from the county website. So, those are the three deeds. Ex- exactly, those are the, those are the three deeds you saw. I think the one did have language because it came out of an estate. It's not a, that, that's-
I guess my question, I thought I was a little confused on this.
You have the, the deeds there and I can show you again if you- Yes. Correct. All, all, all six parcels are owned by Weinhofer's.
Yeah, we wouldn't be doing this if they didn't have proof of ownership. Okay, that has to be one of the things mandatory for us. Another reason why when he settled at Easter time, now we're moving really forward with it.
The one is owned by Weinhofer Farms and then the others are owned individually by John, Jack Dyson, like with John and Lisa Weinhofer.
Properties were closed at Easter?
The, the Yanachak, um, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, the, those Yanachak, uh, properties were, were closing on that was on April twenty-fifth. Other prop-
Yeah, just like I said, we had them just put everything on the Ag Security area so it was all done in one shot. Because his own farm wasn't under Ag Security area other, uh, either. We just said, might as well just put them all on one application and get it done in one shot. You've been doing good, okay, so far.
But, um, what exactly, I, I, I see what's being written here, but what-
Okay, so you have a couple of things that you're being asked to do. First of all, uh, when you're doing, you're doing the resolution first, not deed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, first is acknowledging that you are interested in doing a partnership with us to preserve this land. Okay, that they're gonna do. I don't know what the amount is that you are hopefully deciding to put forward for it. But this would be part of it in here saying, yes, you're gonna put X amount. I requested from Attorney Rose that he put in twenty-three to twenty-four, just in case, uh, money doesn't come in in December but comes in January or something like that. It just covers a time period, okay? That's all, I'm just giving us flexibility. So, the first thing is saying, yes, you're interested in doing a partnership to purchase the, the easement.
I'm sorry, if, if dinner, I just, uh, if, and you should have Resolution thirty-two sixty-six there. And I, I just wanna make sure, while you're going through them, I, you know, if you look, that one is calling specifically for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be committed with the county money to acquire this easement, this preservation, farmland preservation easement.
Yes, okay, so there is, I wasn't sure and I didn't wanna assume. So, okay, so, that's the first thing that we're asking you guys to do. The second thing is housekeeping on your end, which is an ordinance authorizing the loan because of however it is that you're going to get the money to do that with. And that's, that's for you guys to do housekeeping in order to support the three hundred and fifty. The resolution acknowledging the acceptance of Whitehall Township lands to be part of the Ag Security area, that is going back to that other really first step that needs to be done with the application in the Ag Security area. Uh, Mr. Weinhofer's already done that and we're moving forward to it. So, you're kinda catching up with North Whitehall at this point. That's what that's for. And so, that's where the three are coming in. Does that make sense? It is, it is confusing as there's so many-
I understand, I'm just trying to better understand them.
Yeah, if, if-
I thank the board for indulging me.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, you, normally it would've been the Ag Security area would've been something that we had a month ago. That didn't happen, so we're kinda catching up on it. It's a little out of order that it's happening exactly the same time, but there's nothing that is illegal or bad or is going to hinder what's happening moving forward. What happens if this is voted down? That's an answer for the landowner? We're still offering nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars approximately, because again, it's not surveyed, um, six thousand dollars per acre. Okay? It would really help him out to be able to know that you guys are supporting the preservation of this land.
So, the land will still be preserved if you, the county, put your nine hundred thousand dollars, do you understand what I'm going?
As long as the Weinhofer's accept that is the amount. They could turn around and say, no, guess what? We're not interested in doing that and we're gonna turn around and sell it to the next developer who comes down the road. That's their right, they own it, they can do what they want to with it. I'm not assuming that he's gonna say yes or they're gonna say yes. We've been working on this for a very long time with the hope that it would happen and that we would be able to, you know, get some support from you guys to go toward this. And that's, that's all I can say.
So, the total dollar figure will come to like one point two million dollars?
Yeah, whatever it is. And again, we'd have exact amounts after the survey is done, but you guys have a flat amount that you're giving, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't change your amount.
Are you had a question?
Yeah, I just, um, I thought I heard you say
No, not at this point. It also includes, um, Mr. Weinhofer's home farm, which is not part of this ask this evening.
So, I can clarify, my understanding is that all six parcels are gonna go into the agricultural security area. Only four of the six, the, which if, you all have the map there, if you, if you look at that, the, the four largest parcels are- The one is small, the number one, it would, I believe it's number one, two, five and six on this map, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, we try to remember them so we can find them easily enough to do it.
You, you should all have this, it was in the- Like, I, I have a question. Because there wasn't an official survey done, if we did approve this money and vote on this and approve it, can we do it without that being done first? Do you understand what I'm getting at?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and you can, I mean, you're approving money to, to add to the county money to acquire the easement.
But what I'm getting at is there may be a difference, the dollar figure may be different because until that's completed, it's based on per acre.
Well, the county is, the county has proposed on, per acre.
Okay.
My understanding was that, was to put this together as a, as a flat amount.
Yeah, we had that, we had that before, where, um, we had a hundred and five acre farm in Upper Salkin where we paid the six thousand per acre in Upper Salkin, just said, we're gonna pay a flat two hundred and fifty thousand. It, it should've been two hundred and eighty-five, something thousand based on the per acre. They didn't wanna do that for whatever reason, they had quarter of a million, that's what they were willing to do. So, it was a flat amount, it didn't matter what the acreage was.
I was just doing a little housekeeping here, making sure that-
No, 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 that's what I was assuming that you're doing, but that's, again, I don't wanna assume.
Ultimately, you would find out what the per acre amount is, but it's always gonna equal the three, three seventy-five, right? Right, okay.
When I fill out paperwork on my end, it might say something like per acre, but it's figured out after, it's not. But you guys are doing a flat rate, I'll just put it down as a flat rate.
Any more questions from the board for the county on this?
Yeah, I have one. So, they're asking the township to put up three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the town, is it my understanding that township's going to apply for a grant to cover one hundred and forty-nine thousand? No?
You're, you're mixing things up, that was the, we, our budget, we have money for the rest, well, let's not go there.
So, that, that wasn't part of this, it's, the township comes up with three hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's it.
On my end, that's, that's all I'm asking. I don't know where your finances are coming from, I'm not meddling in that.
It's the watershed restoration, so there is no grant attached to this.
Is there anything else, gentlemen, I can help you with?
No, thank you very much. Mr. Weinhofer, would you like to comment?
I'm sorry, but name and address, yeah, sorry. I don't know the address, honestly.
Give the address, you gotta be there.
Four, four, five, four, seven, Sprou Street.
Okay, again, thank you.
Actually, how I got into this Whitehall preservation part with Lehigh County, a friend of mine, Rick, Rick Mulchany, works for the county. Many of you probably know Rick, he grew up in Egypt. He knew we preserved some farms in Northampton. And he said, why don't you preserve some in Lehigh? I said, well, you guys are too cheap, I can't afford, I can't afford somebody only giving me six thousand dollars. Where, like here, we're, we're almost paying eighteen an acre for this. And, and most of it's not farm, uh, I shouldn't say most, but not all of it is farmland. Approximately ninety-five acres are tillable. The rest of the one hundred and fifty-five acres will probably never use.
No, except that you can timber off of it and does qualify as crop.
Okay.
Okay.
Again, I really didn't go there yet, did you think about that or, or like some of your questions, uh, like that she answered? I never even really thought about doing any of that stuff. I mean, we're, we're true farmers, I mean, we, I guess we preserved about four farms now. And, uh, basically, I'm just concerned about open space. You know, you guys shut down the Yestes Shack, which I was grateful for, I mean, it's great for, for, for us in the township. But, and the reason for it, I think, it's not a perfect piece of land to develop. It's a, it's a challenge for developers, a challenge for you guys. This, to me, is a good combination of us working together to keep it as open space. Just taking care of the headaches because, uh, no developer's gonna come in here and have an easy time at this property. But secondly, at the same time, you know, there is some good tillable farmland and that's what we do, you know, we're farmers.
Well, the other thing is that, um, our program ranks the farms based on the top four ranking soils for growth. And the Yestes Shack property and yours have, I just have to be bugging you, have class one soils on, which is premier growing soils. The largest area of class one soils unfortunately are now under warehouses in North Whitehall. And, uh, and, uh, lower, uh, upper McUnge and lower McUnge. So, being able to preserve those outstanding growing soils, uh, which also means they're outstanding perking soils and they help with watersheds and everything else is what our whole program is about and allows him to be able to grow on it. And, um, yes, there is some land there that is wet, there's some that's steep slopes, there's some that's woodland. But as far as, uh, the state is concerned, timbering qualifies as a crop. And, uh, good stewardship of woodlands is not a bad thing, plus it encourages the wildlife and everything else that you want. So, it's all, all helps with the water and percolation and, and filtering of, of things through the land. So, it's all good as far as that's concerned.
And one of the other reasons why we didn't put ours in yet, ours is a small twenty-five acre parcel. So, if this doesn't get through, uh, there's no sense in preserving that, to me, you know, as a farmer, you know, it's not enough there for me to, to stay. You know, I would probably say if, if a developer comes in and develops this property, we'd probably say, hey, you know, what do you want for ours? Because we can't, you know, compete with that. But we had a, this is all about an opportunity here, I think, where- But we had a, this is all about an opportunity here, I think, where it's, it's a rare opportunity in this area. And, you know, Don will tell you, there's not many farms in this area being preserved because it just doesn't happen. People are out to really make money on this stuff and.
Yeah, and although it would be your first preserved farm and maybe even your only preserved farm when it comes down to it in Whitehall, the fact that you are close to the North Whitehall border here and North Whitehall is actively pursuing preservation of their farmland. We just preserved three additional farms this year and we have two more on the agenda for next year. It does end up helping to make a larger area that is agriculturally viable. So that, you know, he can, he may have to run up the road a little bit to help farm or vice versa, but it does help make an area. And 155 acres is nothing to sneeze at. The 90 plus that you're farming is nothing to sneeze at. So Jack did probably receive more per acre for his properties he preserved in North Hampton, but that's because each county has their own rules and regulations that they can set. We have a set amount of 6,000 per acre. Berks County only has a set amount of 2,500 per acre. North Hampton doesn't have enough applicants. They have an unlimited amount. Whatever it's appraised at is what they pay. But on the other hand, Lehigh County has twice as much farmland preserved as North Hampton does. So that's where, that's where we're trying to stretch our dollars. But we also are extremely thankful for all the municipalities who kick in and help to support the farmers who are actually looking to preserve farmland. Because ultimately, it's the owners who are making this decision. It's not something that we forced on them at all. They come to us and apply and we move forward from ranking it there to see if it's viable or not for our system or where it falls in our, our list. So having municipalities' help is tremendous and.
And I think a lot of the concern also, I mean, if I'm looking at it like you guys are from the outside, I'm thinking, "Well, what, what exactly is this going to be worth down the road and everything else?" But yeah, Mike asked me what the urgency of this is. I said, "Well, Mike," I said, "we're, we're paying like $14,500 a month interest right now." So by the time we actually get something from Donna or from you guys, you know, I'm going to have a year of interest probably into this thing or at least eight months. So, you know, we're, we're paying more than 2.5.
Well, if I'm correct, you also managed to get it for less than what the original purchase price was.
Well, originally you wanted 2.8, so you know, over time, you know. And then when Janelle had some friction from you guys, you know, he kind of backed off from what he had offered. So it kind of fell back in, in place. But it just comes down to a lot of variables, you know, and, you know, your, your help would really be appreciated. You know, it's a lot to swing considering it's only 95 acres that's farmable. But we would take care of it and you'd have some open space. I mean, I know people in North Hampton County, now they wish they had open space. All the people have, if you go driving over there, you see all the signs up. Everybody wants open. It's too late. You know, they approved for so many things and, and, and now it's kind of, now in North Hampton is getting aggressive and they're trying to make a difference, but it's tough now. You guys have a chance with us to do this here in Whitehall and how much else is there left in Whitehall as far as open space?
Yeah, I know that you guys are known as having rural land, but this is an opportunity to preserve a piece that actually happens to be extremely valuable.
When Rick told me to proceed your Lehigh County, you got to go to the township. I said, "Go to the township. That's not going to be an easy thing." Because North Hampton, they came to you and said, "Okay, this, they, they, they take three properties that were most recently sold. They have a equation that they come up with and there's your money." But it doesn't work that way in Lehigh. I think you guys were at 6,000 an acre probably for 20 years.
Yeah, we've been about 10, 10 to 12.
But I mean, you know, times, times are changing. You know, properties are getting sold for double.
You can come, you can come and yell my word initially.
Yeah, well, I told Rick, I said, "Man, this isn't going to work," you know, I said, "But, but anyway, that's where we're at." And, and, you know, you, you, you had good questions there, but like I said, I really am not thinking along them lines. We're farmers. My son plans on farming the rest of his life. You know, we don't, we don't plan on going anywhere. So, you know, we're not trying to resell it to somebody else to make a profit or anything like that. We want to just keep it as open space. But right now, it's an affordability issue where if we don't get a little more than 6,000 an acre, we may have to sell it to somebody else. So that's kind of where we are. So that's why we're coming to you guys because we need help.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the floor? Mr. Schneider, would you like to come up? Yeah, if you could. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. You may have brought up more questions than were answered in the beginning.
Can you pull the microphone over to you? Thank you.
Ken Snyder, 4272 Abigail Lane in Whitehall. There's a pile of documentation that I was able to get from the township and I'd like to thank you for that, that information. And originally, when we were coming here tonight, I thought that the ground was still originally in the trust and has not been transferred, but at noon today, I discovered it was actually transferred. So that kind of changed the presentation of some things I had. But what, what I'm looking at is the fact that they bought the property, they own the property, and based on what the county has just said, that they are going to go and offer them 900 and some thousand dollars with or without us. Is that correct? Is that my assumption?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, so just a couple of things that I'd like to just point out and work my way through. Currently now, these parcels under Act 319. Are you aware of that? The township gets approximately $450 in taxes for that whole parcel as we sit here today. So that's the total revenue that you're getting in township. On county and school tax, if you would ask me, I could find it and tell you the number, but I printed that out. So it's not revenue producing for us at this particular time. The other thing is, what happened was our mayor ordered an appraisal on the property and I got a copy of the appraisal and I don't know, do Ushol have a copy of the appraisal?
How many you pay for that appraisal?
No, hold on. You may be right. Okay, I just said, "Prepare for Whitehall Township. The client is Mr. Mike Harical, Mayor." So that's what was ordered on the, on the appraisal. And this is the appraisal. Did you get a copy of that?
I read it that in October 27th of 2022.
Okay, so if I understand what is in the appraisal, the value of the property was 2.8 million plus or minus some change. You are not buying ground. You're buying just an easement. So it's a right that is being given up. And the value of that easement was $923,000 based on the appraisal. If that is the case and the county is giving them 900 and some thousand dollars, that means we're overpaying for the easement because the appraisal estate was only worth 923,000. So if the county is giving them that money, then we're going to give them money for something that has no value or you overpaid for it. Does that make sense?
Do you mind if she comes up, Mr. Schneider, so she can counter that?
And I, and I understand that, that I'm probably the lone guy in here based on what people think.
Could you turn, turn to page three?
Sure.
Yes, just keep, keep coming this way. Those aren't numbered. Okay, there's one, two, three. Okay. When the appraisal was done, the appraisal was on 143.18 acres.
Yes.
The 12 acre parcel that's that long, thin part across the top was not included in the appraisal.
Okay.
Okay, so the acreage he figured on, now this is always an estimated and it says, "Subject to hypothetical easement."
Agreed.
We also contacted as our department because we said the same thing. Okay, we're looking at what is 155 acres with that top piece and it was not done in this appraisal. Okay, that's why it looks like it's coming in at 923,000 instead of the 930, that we've been talking about. Okay, now, we asked the appraiser, let's go right ahead. We asked the appraiser, "Does that change his value per acre?" Okay, because we're adding that top section, 12 acres that you did not originally talked about in here. We have a written affidavit, probably might do not have it with me, I apologize, that says that it did not change his value per acre.
I understand that.
Okay, so that is why when I'm talking, I'm saying 155 thou, 155 acres. This appraisal only has 143 acres, hence the difference in what we're offering versus what you're seeing.
So I, I agree that there's a difference in acres. I'm not going to do that. And just so you know, I have a development and a builder and a realtor background.
Yeah.
But the appraisal does say that the cost or the, plus or minus, that the value of the property drops by 900,000 plus or minus according to this, once you give the easement.
If I, if I can, Mr. Schneider, I, I, and I don't think the language was, was perfectly clear, but, but I see it the opposite. I see a before value of 2.8 million, after value of 923,000. So the, the value of the easement is 1,914,000.
Yeah, the value of the easement is 1,914,000.
Yeah.
I stand corrected because I'm raking back. So the bottom line is that value has dropped down.
Correct.
Okay, and what you're saying is you're giving him X number of dollars and we're going to continue in it. So that thought process that I had that it was 923 was incorrect on my side of the table. That's an incorrect statement. So what you're asking us to do is to supplement his business by giving him X number of dollars.
If you want to state it that way, I take offense to that. However, I will say that that is true for every single piece of property that has been agriculturally preserved across the state.
I agree.
Okay, so that is, it, it, you know, and that can be your opinion on how it's done. It also can be a value of what is remaining for future Pennsylvanians.
So there's two, there's two issues in my mind. The first issue.
Sorry, we don't need to debate this.
That's okay.
There are, there are two issues. Do we preserve or not preserve?
I understand the concept of preserving and I'm not saying I'm for it. I'm not saying against it and the right arrangement. But my issue is that currently in our township right now, you're asking us to give $375,000 for the right.
Of preserving. And let's just say that I agree for the sake of discussion.
Currently, we are working with a comprehensive plan that has not been decided what we should be doing with all of the ground that we have. We have 525 acres under the realm of our recreation department based in a memo that I just got the other day. And this would fit exactly into that slot, what we would do. You're going to take $375,000 for a right and have nothing for it other than the fact that it's preserved as compared to taking $375,000 and investing it into something that the township already has to be improved. That's where my fundamental differences at that point. Besides the fact, okay, that he's a business person, just like I am and anybody else. And I have yet to come across municipality to supplement my business, except the federal government from time to time. Okay, but this is a question that is valid on your side of the table. And it has a big effect on our township and should be handled via referendum so that there's not only 30 people in the room discussing this and it has to deal with the fact of the direction that the township is going. So in theory, he could continue to do what he's doing here now, turn around and ask for a referendum to be put on the ballot, find out what the people want to do and then come back and reapply. It doesn't have to be today. Every other municipality.
Not every other municipality.
Oh.
My municipality is one that we put money in toward preservation. We have not done a referendum. It is a choice of the supervisors to support agricultural preservation within our community.
Which community is that?
Lower Milford. That is a, that is a choice within our community. Lower Mac has passed one, Upper McConge has not. Mc, Weisenberg supports preservation but does not have a referendum.
Okay.
Okay, Heidelberg supports preservation but does not have a referendum. Their supervisors put $10,000 to $20,000 from their general fund per year into a fund. Again, it was their choice. That is something that they find that their residents overall support.
I don't want to debate that part of the conversation.
Now, to your point about cost, okay?
Yes.
So I, I, I see your point that you take $375,000, you put it into a park that you already have, whatever, or open space, whatever you have. You can also turn around and say, "The commissioners are putting $375,000 into a parcel that is now going to remain open space. It is not going to be their financial issue to have to maintain it, to have to cut the grass on it, to have to grow benches." They don't own it. That's correct. But they're putting the money into it. You were saying where the money goes, it's a waste of time. I don't think that it's a waste of time. It's ability for the residents surrounding and for the commissioners to know that there is going to be a parcel that remains open space to protect watershed values as well that isn't going to cost them a massive amount of money to maintain.
So rather than get into whether you're right or I'm right.
Yeah, it's very important. I'm not, I'm not trying to.
Six months ago, we couldn't get $30,000 to start a comprehensive plan because there's no money in the budget.
And today, we're sitting here as residents as I am and say, "You want to spend $375,000 to invest in another person's property." That's my position. It has nothing to do with preserving or whatever, okay?
The other thing is there's two maps that I hear you talking about, the way it's set up.
You have a map of this table and that's a designated area and then you have the preservation inside that designated area. Is that correct?
That's a fair, that's a fair description.
In this map that's drawn, is this the only parcel that's inside that map?
For preservation at this point or for Ag Security Area you're talking about?
Security area.
Uh, no, there is another parcel that is under Ag Security Area within Whitehall. It's a Mickley property.
Will these people be coming to us and asking for money as well?
No, they already did and they were turned down.
Okay, all right.
Well, I'm just.
No, they already did and they were turned down about four or five years ago.
In the appraisal itself.
Not as nice of a property, I hate to say it.
It's okay. In the appraisal itself, they refer to something called the ACI and who has the rights. In here, it's stated, and again, I understand that it's just the appraisal that stated that and they may be misunderstood what they said, but the rights are given, and you are correct, is an easement and there's two people who control the easement. The county and the State Department of Agriculture or something like that. Is that correct?
Yes, the agricultural preservation is underneath the Ag.
And it said that they can know, it says in here that they all.
Oh, it says in here.
Which page are we looking at?
Page 25.
Okay.
It says in here that the Pennsylvania Agricultural Security Area law controls the program and you do and they can do nothing except build something that affects the farm directly. Bundle of rights they refer to it as.
Correct.
So let's just call it the easement.
Okay.
But the reality is, he can't do anything without their approval, according to this.
Right, and that approval, that's why I said he needs to come to our office, to our board when he's putting in, if he's putting up a building, if he's doing, we have to do a conservation plan that he has to follow the conservation plan. Any of those things, the, the, the one in house right that he's allowed to have, all of that has to go through our office because we are in fact the representatives of the state for the Agricultural Security Area Act.
So is there any clawback money to either you or us? If you donate and give him 900 and some thousand and we give him 375,000 and he elects to sell it to somebody else because the value goes up, do you get any sharing of the money that you, I'm going to use the word gifted?
Well, that's what, that was a question that was asked earlier and the answer is no. We do not get any money back. The state does not receive any additional money back other than what comes in the proceeds of the sale itself as far as real estate tax is concerned or the reassessment of the property and its value increases.
Is there a limited amount of time that he must hold it before he can sell it?
Nope, he could sell it tomorrow if he wanted to.
So then in theory, I can purchase the property for 2.5 million, settle with you for 900,000, turn around and take our 375,000, reduce his base cost and flip it, sell it to somebody else for another 500,000 and take a capital gain loss on what he was purchased it for in theory. No, that's a gathering.
No, in theory and truthfully, we've had some landowners who have done that. But they turn around and they are selling a preserved farm then. This is after, after the preservation you're talking about, not beforehand. He could do it beforehand but not receive.
Again, and I, I'll use this as an example. When I did a project with Habitat and I just did a project for Home for Our Troops, the way the procedure works is that they grant you X number of dollars, almost 100% funding, okay? And then you live there for 10 years or a period of time and then at the end of 10 years, you can sell it. And then they will recoup a portion or all of the money they put in depending on the circumstances. Everyone's different.
Everyone's different.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
But the bottom line is, it puts them in a position that they don't go and flip it, they don't sell it, and you share in the profits of there to fund another.
What you're talking about is a fundamental question of how the law was originally written.
I agree.
And the law was never written that way. It was written in that it is preserved and then the landowner has certain rights which they retain. And one of those, if they want to turn around and get a thousand dollar, a thousand percent profit on it after it is preserved, it is their right to do so. The state and the legislature are more concerned at that point in time that they had land that was preserved that in perpetuity were going to be inspecting and making sure that it is continued to use as agricultural land. So that is, that's what they wanted to do. It's their property. We are merely saying that they cannot do development on it. It needs to remain in agricultural use. He could plant orchids on it, he could do grapevines, he could do anything like that as well.
But in the zone that you have currently set up in Lehigh County, the protected area is a table. You admit that you have people who have not followed the rules and sold off and did developments anyway.
No, I'm not. Agricultural, the agricultural security area is merely a base that you have to be in before you can be preserved.
Okay.
I, we have no control over ag security areas as far as saying somebody can't develop it. Okay, only after it has been preserved and they have received that easement money. You don't receive anything for joining the ag security area.
So Act three nineteen, which this property is currently in right now.
Right, has nothing to do with our program or, or ag security.
I understand that ag security area is protection for the farmer, land.
Correct.
Both need to like overlap for this to work.
Does the law provide for an unwinding of this preservation?
Not of the preservation, yes of the ag security area. But if the land is preserved, it cannot unwind from ag security area. The two of them are permanently locked together. Does that, does that make any sense to you?
So if, if someone changes the boundaries and this parcel becomes out of it, the preservation still exists. Is that correct?
The preservation will always exist and it will always remain in the ag security area because it is part of the ag security area now.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't remove it from the ag security area. The easement is permanent and if, if it is preserved, it's in the ag security area and neither of those things can be removed. I think the, the potential confusion on this, and I, I appreciate the presentation as well because if, if, if it is put in the ag security area but not preserved, it could be removed from the ag security area.
That's right, that's what I.
Before it is preserved.
It's, it's, it's Act three nineteen without the tax cuts, if that makes any sense. But you don't have to return anything back on the ag security area, but the preservation.
So in, in closing, these are the statements that I would, I would say.
That number one, I'm neither for nor against preservation at this particular point. I don't know where our township goes in that area. But what's before us now, today, I'm against that for a couple of reasons. Number one, we're in the middle of doing our comprehensive plan, trying to figure out what the heck is going on with that thing, okay? And when you start preserving a hundred and forty-five acres of ground in our township and don't know if it would beneficial for whatever we want to do, I don't think the timing is correct on that today, number one. Number two, I personally have a fundamental problem with the idea that it's not being handled as a referendum because we are basically supporting a business owner for the purposes of preservation. And I think it should be done as a preservation, as a capitalist or whatever you want to call me.
I just don't think it's right to support private enterprise in that way.
And I agree that we could debate that all day long, but that isn't the primary debate. The primary debate at this particular point is the timing is way off and should be handled via referendum. Sure.
Farmland preservation is the program that exists today.
Correct.
What's called Green Futures Fund.
It's called what, sir?
Green Future Funds that was passed by a voter referendum. And I believe Whitehall voters supported it at seventy-five percent. Dedicate funds for the acquisition of land for farmland preservation and recreational amenities. And Whitehall taxpayers already paid into that fund. And then when one administration was in there, they transferred those ten million dollars that was remaining in the fund.
Into farmland preservation.
Had nine hundred thousand dollars left on the table. And they put in an exclusive farmland preservation fund. So that money now has been going to Lower McConge Township. It's been going everywhere else. And we've paid into that. So it's, this is kind of a leverage to get our tax money back. We've lost two parcels already that are, are zone open space that we approve for development. Huh? Well, it's, it's coming back, it's benefiting Whitehall. We.
The nine hundred and thirty thousand.
The nine hundred and thirty, we're not getting that back. That's, that was, that was a per capita benefit. And this opportunity for farmland preservation did not exist then, so we can capitalize on it. But if it did, that would be one means to acquire it. Farms, they were both open space preservation. They are now dedicated for homes, so that's why it's open space. This land across here looks like farmland today. It's all zone for residential. They can develop our right tomorrow. There is no other large tract of open space dedication that I am aware of, other than parks.
So your, your example actually proves the point. With the law that we voted for as a Whitehall Township resident, that we put our money into a pot
and we were supposed to get it and they changed the law and took it away from us. This is no different, folks.
It's because it was never used at that time.
I, I, I understand, but you know.
The townspeople in Harrisburg do what they want, when they want. They don't put the law and say, hey, by the way, Whitehall, we're making this change. And that's all I'm saying.
If, if, if there's enough need for more development in Whitehall, not Whitehall, in the state of Pennsylvania, they'll undo whatever they got to do to make that happen.
That's why I sit down and say, when we spend the money, it's considered to be gone. And that's all I'm saying. You and I can debate the preservation side a hundred percent, but I would just tell you,
as a resident sitting here, putting three hundred and seventy-five thousand based on where we're at now and look what's going on, any other things we need, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for one year buys me three cops. It maybe buy me some more people in development section. It may buy me a lot in this township that I don't have.
That's a good point you bring that up because.
Because the budget in this township that was taken down, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars represents approximately a quarter of a mil. A mil is two million something. So it's approximately a quarter of a mil. And for you to sit down and agree to raise a quarter of a mil. I think by the act of God, something happened to raise a quarter of a mil. And you're sitting down spending three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars because it's an emergency of some site.
And I just don't think that's the proper way to do it.
The numbers coming out of Penn State and also for Heritage Conservancy. When you have a purely example, an acre of open space or an acre of land, okay? And you get a dollar of taxes for that acre of land. That's what you're charging. If the parcel is residential, the average is costing the township a dollar thirty-five to a dollar forty-one now of that dollar that comes in. If you have commercial, it costs anywhere from ninety-nine cents of that dollar to a dollar ten. If you have open space, it costs the municipality about thirty-nine cents. So open space is actually cheaper to maintain for a municipality. And you are going to save in that you don't have to have three more police because of the number of homes that would necessarily be built on that acreage. And that's across the board and those are, okay, those are kind of average numbers.
I will, I will agree that the.
There is a report of something to that effect. And I'll go to my archives and find a report that counterfits that, okay?
Always, always.
So we'll agree with that. But here's what I can't agree with. Whitehall Township has very little spots left to develop residential. And I'm going to use the term higher, higher end real estate, okay? And the end result is that whatever is available, if you take it and preserve it, we don't stand the opportunity to do that. And I'm speaking as a developer, okay? I live in Whitehall, I mean, one acre, and I'm telling you that as of now, if I could, there are going to be at least ten people that would have lived in Whitehall Township in the last.
Forty-five days, two people in my office that live in Whitehall and would like to stay in Whitehall. There is no ground to develop or build. And that, okay, is also important to the community because it gives us a mix that we currently don't have. So as much as one side is over here saying preserve it, I get it. But there are other issues in this township that we have to address and work our way through.
You say commercial costs us more. Well, I'm going to tell you, in this township, commercial.
Pays a lot of our bills.
No, I, I, I disagree.
It does. In this, in this township where I live, it's important.
And I also believe that the two parcels is the each a parcel and the parcel over here should be maintained for residential. This is how I feel about it. And you all have your opinion. I expressed mine and whatever you do moving forward is up to you.
Thank you. Was that? Yeah, no, no, no. Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Thank you.
It was very long ago when we acquired the first police station. There were twenty-seven officers. Now at fifty. If you look at the cost per officer, we're over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per officer on our annual basis. And to say that's the only land that's left to develop, we have hundreds of acres across the street that are zoned residential today too.
Well, you said that.
Yes. Mr. Winehoffer, would you like to comment?
Name and address. Thank you. I'm Brad Winehoffer. I, I actually live in Northampton at Seventy Seventy-Eighths Front, Northampton. And I'm a partner in Winehoffer Farms LLC with my parents. And I understand Mr. Snyder's, you know, a developer and he's pushing for, you know, the future. But I, I grew up in Whitehall my entire life. I lived with my parents in Whitehall until I was twenty-six. I believe that was probably around two thousand and twelve when we presumed that the Yaster Shack property was going possibly for development and homes. So, you know, I understand Mr. Snyder saying people, you know, need homes in, in Whitehall, but I was one of those people that wanted to move out of Whitehall because of the pressure of development. So I looked in Northampton. And at the time, there was a lot of open space in Northampton. And I currently live over by the old Copper Penny, if you guys are familiar with that area, three twenty-nine.
Not that way anymore, right?
We were, we were lower.
Right.
So I would say in the last three or four years, there's, you can count probably twelve to fifteen, sixteen warehouses that went in in the last three to four years. And, you know, I think when my dad approached me about doing this deal with, with the state and the township, we preserved four farms in Northampton. I thought it was a great opportunity to preserve the hometown of Whitehall. Just seeing what happened in Northampton, thinking, you know, as I was twenty-six, that was my future. And I guess my question is, you know, again, I understand Mr. Snyder and the developers and, and growth. I'm not against growth, but I am against, I think the older generation thinks my younger generation doesn't want to live in open space or preserve farms or, I'm seeing the growth in, in that aspect. I'm seeing farmers markets growing. I'm seeing, you know, mom and pop shops growing. I'm not, I'm, I'm seeing open areas, open malls, right? You talk about the Lehigh Valley Mall, Whitehall Mall, outdoor areas. That's what we're trying to do here. And, and I don't want to see it, what happened in Northampton and me moving away turn into, turn into that in Whitehall. I think we have an opportunity to save it, so that's all I want to say.
Any more questions from the floor? Ma'am?
Karen Peschakow, thirty-three oh three Mussuming Court. I just want to thank the Whitehall family for doing this. It's, it's really an important thing to do. And I want to thank the county for all the work that they're doing. I want to thank our solicitors for all the time that they've put into this. I'm a city girl. I grew up in Northall, Allentown. So Whitehall for me was like the country. And when I was growing up, I remember what it was like before the Lehigh Valley Mall. I think that farming is part of the culture of Whitehall and our county. We have so little farmland left. I want to thank Commissioner Warren for his work on this. Waiting, just a couple of comments on the, from the, from Mr. Snyder. Waiting for the comprehensive plan to take action on this farm, I don't think is prudent because we have to act now. I think Mr. Warren's comment about the farmland preservation vote. If you talk to mo, the majority of the people in this valley, everybody complains about the traffic. There's too much traffic and we want to stop development. This room was packed with the, we have Valley Hospital development issue. This room, this, the room was also packed at the planning commission for WB Homes that is going to build on thirty-five acres of class one soil right up the road. My understanding is that the Lazarus family is going to sell the class one soil right across the street on Rural Road. So those are more houses. I think we have enough houses. We have no preserved farms in this, in this township at all. And I think it's unfair to expect the county to bear the burden of purchasing this property when it's in our township. It's going to benefit us. It's going to help with stormwater. It's going to help with climate change mitigation, which I talked about. A farmland, farmland is not the same as a recreation area with a jungle gym on it. It's just not the same. And it's incumbent on this board to understand the value of farming, the value of this land and preserving this tiny, tiny little piece compared to the rest of our township. Now, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, okay, it's a lot of money. And I appreciate the fact that maybe we should do a better job of trying to manage these kinds of preservation efforts. However, divided by the fourteen thousand seven hundred and ninety people living in the township, that comes to less than a dollar a day for one month for every single person in this community. Is there some other way that we can try to get this money back? Can we have fundraisers? Can we get contributions from people? I think the time is act, as, the time to act is now because the land is available, the seller, the landowner is willing, the county's ready, and I fully support it. And thanks for listening.
Thank you. Mr. McCool?
Can I do have a question that, that piggybacking off of that? Later on in the agenda, we're voting for Copley Creek Restoration Project. Is that to accept the grant or to apply for the grant? Why? Apply. Okay. A couple of years ago, we applied for a, the phase one of the Copley Creek Restoration Project. I firmly believe we were shortlisted for that award because the state does not call you back and say, did you start the project? Do you have the land? Do you own this? They don't ask you all those button questions if, they're not going to make an award unless you're on the shortlist. That project was supposed to be awarded in September. We were supposed to go to construction in October because of the, I think we're in the middle of a pandemic. It did not happen. They weren't going to make award in November. And we were told, we can't wait, we got to do it, we got to get seeds in the ground and we got to walk away. We actually, the administration sent a letter to the state withdrawing our grant application. It was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So putting in the context of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we walked away from the grant because we couldn't wait two months and then do the plantings the following spring. We ended up doing the plantings the following spring anyway. So you look at the context of a three hundred thousand dollars, there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars we essentially walked away from, in my opinion, so.
Mr. McCool?
And nobody asked a question about it. Nobody, they were, they were, we were under the guise that they could complete the project and the grant money will come through. And then we, after, we, we had discussions with the state and they said, no, you have to wait until that, the grants are awarded before you can put shovel in the ground, so.
All right, George McCool, forty-three fourteen Abigail Lane. I may have missed it earlier, but I know the county said there's no provision for a clawback on the loan that they give, on the grant that they give for nine hundred plus thousand. But for the township for the three seventy-five, is there a provision that the township's legally able to write for a provision if there's a sale on this, if there's a potential repay? Just to, township can't do it at all.
I think we asked that earlier and the answer we were told was no.
Okay, I want to make sure that. Now, if the township doesn't give the three hundred and seventy-five thousand, but will the county still give their share?
Yes.
But they might not accept it as the.
Correct, but that could still be preserved without the three hundred and seventy-five thousand from the township. Is that correct?
Correct. That's what they said, yes.
So. That's what I wanted, but other thing to comment is that, and this may or may not ever turn in any development, but we're in a situation here with the township. And I sit on the school board. We get hammered every year when there's a tax increase. And we're looking at three hundred and seventy-five thousand that fits in the budget in general for the township, right? So when we, we talk about someone's home might go up a hundred dollars a year and it's eight dollars a month, there are people in our township that eight dollars a month is significant for them. They don't have anything to cut back. It's fixed income. And we're in a situation where our hands get tied, right? Situations like this, I agree with Mr. Snyder where this is better off for referendum. If the township agrees as a voting group, for the folks to come out to vote on it to go, then it goes, right? But this is a tough one to look at and look at the entire budget for because you look at where the development is. Anytime that we lose a chance to develop property here, we're hurting the overall township, right? Because we're facing now, commercial buildings in Whitehall, every few months are challenging their tax assessments, right? You guys see that right now, we see it in the school board.
You guys see that right now. We see it in the school board. So we've lost five hundred thousand dollars a year just in tax revenues coming into the school district. I'm not sure what the number is for the township that they've lost on that, but we're not generating any revenue to offset that in any way, right? So look at that, five hundred thousand, that's out, right? There goes to a tax base for it. So what's happening is, we don't have opportunities for four- and five-bedroom homes in the township, which help bring a good tax base in, which help bring higher income earners to the township, which helps increase the value for these commercial properties to have when they're going to the assessment because you've got higher wage earners in the township here who then will help drive higher value businesses here. It's a big, it's a big deal for us that we have to look at that. So even when you guys talk about the acres that are going to develop here, that may or may not ever get developed because the hospital owns that. So if they don't get their approval done for their mixed use that they want, they can never sell that and that might never be developed. They can just sit on it. They don't have the urgency to sell that. So that hundred fifty-plus acres across the street might never get developed. Might not be any houses on it. So it depends really who owns those parcels of land. So it's not like there's a whole opportunity for us to develop in Whitehall. And most of these developments in Whitehall at one point or another were some open space. And open space got removed for those folks to have homes on them. And now some of those folks don't want homes or anything on the open space next to them. I think that's not really the right mentality to look at it that way. But I would just ask you guys to table this vote and look to potentially discuss this further and maybe look at a referendum and that, let the township overall vote on it.
Thank you.
Jack Myers, Jack Rose, I have a question. One minute, please. Do we get any MS four credits? Because it's farmland, we probably do not for stormwater credits because we are preserving something and because it's grade-one soil.
I think to answer your question with my limited knowledge of MS four, it's not going to be an issue the township has to deal with than we would if it was going to be developed, you know, into homes.
Right.
It's not going to increase our MS four. It's going to pretty much keep its status quo.
Yeah, I was just curious, did it decrease because we're preserving? I didn't know if we got credits, like carbon credits, you know? I didn't know if the state had a program.
There are no credits for that.
All right, that's all I have.
Like I said, if it's developed, no, right.
I was just asking because I didn't know if that applied to something like this.
Can I ask a question of the Weinhofer's?
You know, increasing our level of mitigation of stormwater.
Commissioner Tia has a question.
Just a quick point of clarification on timeline for the Weinhofer's. Mr. Weinhofer had mentioned that Rick Mulchany gave the idea of the land preservation from the county. Did that come after the land was purchased by your family or was that prior to?
No, it was prior. And the major interest for me is I live right there and I farm it. So obviously, you know, we were interested in it. But it's a whole different situation the way Northampton County does it. Northampton sort of makes a little more sense because they'll, they'll be more, I guess it's fair to the person trying to either sell it or buy it, where they're going to match whatever the increases are, where like Lehigh is lagging like, I don't know, fifteen years behind.
Well, the difference is our waiting list ranges anywhere.
Can you please come up? I'm sorry.
Our waiting list ranges anywhere from fifty to a hundred farms.
Can you say your name and address again?
Down in Runway Farm and Preservation, Lehigh County. Our waiting list, as I said before, ranges anywhere from fifty to a hundred farms per year that we're looking at and we're ranking. Northampton's range is about fourteen farms to twenty farms. We have a set amount that the commissioners has given us, very fortunately for the last about five years or so, anywhere from two to one million dollars per year toward our program. That's matched by state funds, usually two to one. So this year, we had three and a half million that we could spend. Northampton's, I'm not quite sure how much the commissioners put in, just that because of the lesser amount of farms that they have coming through, they have less impact. They also had basically pounded on a bunch of the townships that they had to pass referendums so they have, so they have money. There's a lot of townships sitting out there that have millions of dollars sitting in an open space fund with no applicants coming forward. Because that's the only way that the things are chosen, as I said before. It's the landowners coming forward asking to be preserved. It's not us going on and pounding on doors. Sometimes we do drop some hints on some folks, but that's not usually because we're so busy with other folks who have already applied. So, and we do have an opportunity coming up in Weisenberg, linking over into Upper McUngee with a massive landowner over there who's looking at another hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty acres to be preserved. She's applied for twenty twenty-four. So being able to get him in this year with the funding that we have now is really spectacular because we could be really looking at taking that money and using it someplace else and it wouldn't come in here. And to your point, you guys left money sitting on the table. I know my municipality did, a lot of unfortunate, a lot of folks did. The county, I thought, did a smart thing at the time in that they turned it around to put toward farmland preservation. Because otherwise, I think it was ten thousand, or ten million dollars, that was going to end up having to go back to the state. And we all as a county would have lost the benefit. So. The other thing in response to the school board member, appreciate the fact of what he's saying. I also want to point out that it has been proven that properties surrounding preserved farms increase in value by about an average of fourteen thousand dollars per household, if not more. So the increased appraised value of those farm, or those properties helps for tax base. And we're looking at a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-five acres that will not have children on them. That is a major impact in how much it costs per child in the schools district during the course of a year. I'm in Southern Lehigh School District. The last quote that we had, each student was costing the school district of anywhere about fifteen thousand dollars per student. Any new kids that come in, that's how much more funding you need for teachers, for classroom space, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So yes, building bigger houses and bringing in higher-paying people brings in higher tax quantities. But that also still brings in children, that still brings in extra room that needs to be made in school districts. And open space, cows don't go to school. So, thank you.
Deborah Ozeen, four-four zero eight North Church Street, Whitehall. I'm not going to cite a lot of statistics because I didn't come in here with a prepared speech. And I've heard that we had a referendum in the past that said, the people who are here want more open space. We don't need to revisit this. I don't think we need to develop more open space. I think we need to preserve this. I think we need to seriously look at what we call the American dream. The house with the green yard that's got way too many pesticides on it, that is killing our environment. We need to be looking at buildings that we have right now that were maybe commercial buildings or factories at one time. And should they be torn down and should something replace them, should they be reused? The last thing that we need to be doing is building more single-family homes with more green lawns that are eliminating our carbon sinks, that are eliminating our habitats that are left. I want some green in this town. I like that I live in part of Whitehall where I can walk a couple blocks and I can feel like I'm in the country. I'm very close to this farm. I would like to see this farm preserved. That's just my opinion.
Rebel Bertoni, forty-four fifty Sanibel Drive, Whitehall. I'm here as a friend and neighbors, you know, of the Weinhofer's. And I say, give them the money, let's get this land preserved. It's, you know, it's as plain and simple as that. And I agree with the last lady that spoke. A good community is a mixture of open space, residential, high-end, you know, apartments, commercial, industrial. I don't think any of us want to live in a town where it's wall-to-wall houses or wall-to-wall whatever. Yeah, I reached out, when this first came about, I reached out to Chris Cucker from Wildlands Conservancy. And Chris is an old friend of mine. And he pointed me to this document, which is the Whitehall Township Northern Tier Open Space Strategy. It's from June two thousand and eleven. This is a study that was commissioned by this board at the time. And it largely deals with this property in question today. I'm not going to go into all the details. It's rather lengthy. And one important thing, though, is toward the back, it refers to a community survey that was done at the time. And one of the questions was, is it important to preserve open space in Whitehall Township? And if so, would you be willing to tax yourself to do so? Fifty-seven percent of respondents either agreed or strongly agreed with that. Some folks mentioned a referendum and that's fine. You know, we're talking about a loan tonight from the Lafarge Fund, if I'm correct. Maybe a referendum in the future would be a way to repay that money. They just did an open space referendum in Carbon Camp, a very conservative area. I think it was last year. It passed with eighty percent of the vote. You can't get eighty percent of people to agree on anything today. And they agreed to tax themselves in Carbon Camp. If you can do it there, you can do it here. And we can maybe roll that into an open space slash, you know, parks, recreation, whatever, outdoor recreation. We've got some pools right now that need repair, you know? Maybe use money for something like that, improvements to the parkway, open space, kind of roll it all into one. It's just a thought. But for now, this is time-sensitive. Let's give them the money, get that land preserved. We can pay it back later and use money for other things, you know? It's passed other places, the school board. They raise taxes every year and nobody backs it up. If we have to tax ourselves a little bit to pay for this, so be it. That's all I have.
Thank you. We had one over here first, then you can go next, Mr. Plujian.
Bill Fonzon, twenty-six thirty-four Shaw Drive, Whitehall. There's two, obviously, groups. There's the pro-development group and obviously the pro-preservation group. I am a pro-development person, one being that my parents came to Whitehall Township in nineteen seventy-two and they live in Egypt and they still do. And there was a development put in and gave them the opportunity to move from one area of Lehigh County to Whitehall Township. And I grew up here. I still live here today. I'm in a development now that was developed and it's new construction and that gave me an opportunity to live here with my family. So I'm pro-development. I'm very appreciative of people in farming that they're pro-farming, too. My thing of everything is, we're talking about putting in preservation and no one says you can't go in preservation. They can go in preservation if they choose to put it in. We're talking about township dollars and cents. I mean, if Lehigh County wants to give them nine hundred grand, that's their choice to give them nine hundred thousand or frankly, give them five hundred thousand dollars if they want. And the owner can put it in preservation. So. My question is, why does the township have to give them three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to put in preservation when they can do that? When we can save that money, we're not stopping that homeowner from doing that, right? They can do it. There's a lot of people that spoke and said, sure, let's put it in preservation. No one's sitting here saying they can't do that. I look at a portion of times are very difficult, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars of township monies, a lot of money. There's other places, I think, in the municipality that could be used. And I don't necessarily think that the three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars should go to a homeowner when they can ultimately do what they want to do without the township's three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. It's not stopping them. We can still do it. So I just would like you to look at that and say, you can have a person, whether we agree with development or not agree with development, right, or preservation or not, I would like the township to take a step back and say, Mr. Homeowner, you can do what you want to do. We can utilize the funds for another area, right? If it was something to say, you can't do that with the three seventy-five, well, it's a different, it's a different discussion. But they can still accomplish what they want to with the funds from the township. And I think it could be utilized in other areas.
Thank you. No? You're good? Anyone else?
Craig Snyder, twenty-six twenty-nine Augusta Drive, Whitehall, Pennsylvania. I'm just sitting here, Ken's my dad. But, you know, one thing I was questioning in the beginning, you had mentioned that there was a possibility of two separate, she could subdivide it into two parcels.
I, that, I'm not sure where that...
May, you may say that they could actually subdivide the parcels into two separate parcels and build one house on it.
I, so just to be clear, there are actually four parcels already? I'm not sure what the subdivision comment. It's just, it has to be recorded.
Peter Max is what was said earlier.
Yeah. So, okay, so they want to preserve the four parcels. It doesn't matter how you cut it, there would be only one home allowed, okay?
Correct.
In Lehigh County, our program allows, since there's four separate parcels, if he wanted to sell each parcel separately, he could. But each separate parcel remains in agricultural preservation. Each separate parcel retains the deed of easement attached to it. And three of those parcels would have to say, no home, because there's only one home that's allowed to be built.
Correct. So he could subdivide, build a house on a parcel less than two acres.
Correct.
Disturbed two acres, but that parcel could have fifty acres to it.
Correct.
And he could sell that fifty-acre home site to somebody else.
Correct. But it would remain in agricultural preservation underneath the reserve easement.
But he could build a home on a fifty-acre parcel.
Correct.
Sell that for a million dollars to somebody who wants to live on fifty acres.
Right, as long as they follow all the rules and regulations.
Correct, correct. Absolutely. So would any, any preserved farm owner in the state of Pennsylvania. Correct. So in essence.
What can they allow in parcels, okay? Which would he do in the county?
In full clarification, he could subdivide fifty acres into its own parcel, build a home on that two acres, sell it for a million dollars and it's good, and he's good.
Yes, he could because he's a landowner.
Okay. Because that's... That's a clarification because a fifty-acre parcel with a very nice home on it is worth two million dollars, a million dollars.
Depending on what, on what somebody's looking for.
And he still maintains a hundred acres to farm.
Yes, but that, and just remember, whoever buys that then is going to be required to have farm on it.
But they're also getting Act three nineteen benefits because they're paying less taxes and they only pay taxes on a one acre, on a two-acre parcel.
They're paying the regular amount on the two-acre parcels, yes.
But they still own fifty acres at Act three nineteen.
Yes, absolutely.
That hurts as a township president.
Why?
Because there's three, because I'm in Whitehall, rooted up in Whitehall.
Okay, yeah.
There's three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars available. And well, the preserves are not, and I agree with some people that have mentioned it. If they want to preserve it, there's nine hundred thousand dollars to do that. And I think that's phenomenal if they choose to do that. But to take money from the township and make a business deal by giving them three hundred seventy-four thousand dollars, allow them to subdivide one parcel and sell it for whatever, when my kids are residents of Whitehall and could go to the parks and the communities, there's two pools that aren't currently operating right now. The funds could be different. That's just, I just wanted to make that point out that he could do that in essence.
I mean, fair enough. You're entitled, you know, you're entitled to your opinion on that. And there's really nothing that you're going to argue against that, except that now you're going to have three other... You're going to have three other parcels that are still going to remain preserved. You have... That parcel that's going to be made.
I'm not arguing at all. I'm just simply saying that he still has the opportunity to subdivide a fifty-acre parcel and sell it for a million and a half to two million dollars to someone else living in a nice parcel in Whitehall Township. And there's nothing we can do about it.
That's correct. He could do that now if he wanted to.
Sure. And he could do that except for nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, and he could do it now without being preserved as well.
Sure.
And then he could sell anything else and then he could blow up.
And if he sells everything else as a resident of Whitehall, and I will say, I...
And, 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 and if he sells everything else as a resident of Whitehall, and I, and I will say, I sell real estate.
I have friends that are younger, in their thirty-fives and forties, who are current residents of Whitehall, have young families and are leaving Whitehall because there's no place to go from in Whitehall. And, and I believe there's a right place, there's a balance and everything else, but.
No, I'm going to counteract that and say, my community now is, we're, we're known as No Bilford instead of Lower Milford. We have sixty-five preserved farms, okay?
I respect, I respect that, I also, I also respect, I respect the lower Milford's position is different than Whitehall Township's position today. So you're, you're comparing apples and oranges in your debate.
Well, and I'm also going to say then that, that they can go. There are, yes, there is unfortunately a housing shortage nationwide right now and particularly in the Lehigh Valley. I will not argue that at all, that is very true.
And our community is, is, has a housing shortage for a family that wants to move from a twenty-seven yard square foot home forward. It does, that's not. Debate tonight would have been.
No, absolutely not, it's true.
I just wanted to clarify that he could, that he could subdivide that parcel, he could two acres and sell it for a million dollars, a million dollars, and, and that's it.
Yep, he absolutely could. And then in turn, by doing that, whatever the real estate taxes are that then occur because of that is going to be received by the township.
And in full, in no disrespect, I live in Whitehall Township, my taxes are ten thousand dollars. If there's twenty-four more homes sitting in that parcel with one, that one three acres.
Oh, yeah, no, they're.
He's going to receive more than that.
I know, he, he mentioned he moved out of Whitehall Township because he wanted more space. If there was an opportunity in Whitehall Township for home sites to have space, there could be thirty homes offering the same tax revenue.
Absolutely, I'm absolutely, but I'm saying you still are going to receive, whether you have thirty homes on it or whether you have one home on it. You're still going to receive, okay?
Fair enough.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Hi, my name's Lisa Weinhofer, forty-five, forty-seven Spruce Street. I know listening to builders and everything going on, um, we've been farming all our lives. That's what we've done. When we got married, we farmed seven hundred and fifty acres. We leased most of the farmland we farm. The farms are all being developed, we've lost so much farmland to FedEx, we've lost farmland to all these warehouses going up. We are trying, my family and I are trying to preserve whatever land we can to keep farming going. And as you can see, there's signs out in all different counties, save the farms, save the farms. What is this world without farms? You know, this is all we have. We have no interest at all in making money and turning it over to sell fifty acres here or break it up. We farm, that's what we do, we want to farm the rest of our lives. Our son wants to farm, our daughter just joined us, we want to keep farming in the family. So it's so important for us to be able to at least have some land that we can keep farming. Because the land, the farmland is going so quickly and it's really a shame. But that's all I want to say is we have no intention of selling it. We have no, alls we want to do is keep the farmland, we have to keep farming, because it's very important to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi. Four, forty-six, thirteen Main Street, Whitehall, right down, right on Egypt. When I first came into this valley, which was in nineteen seventy-nine, all this area was farmland. I had a friend whose family sold their farmland to do all that development off of Chestnut Street, Columbia Street, off like to the Styles area. I loved this area. I moved away, I came back and I saw how much it developed. I moved away again, it's all job-related and getting life experiences. I came back to this area back in twenty-twelve, I was in North Whitehall. I moved to Whitehall in twenty sixteen. I have seen so much traffic, that's ridiculous. Developments, I'm all for developing, but let's stop with the cookie cutter houses that cost over three hundred thousand. I'm a renter and my rent has gone up so much because of all the houses that are coming around. My rent goes up because the taxes go up. Why do the taxes go up? Because we have to build a new school. People don't realize that when you develop and bring more people in, you're going to have to increase your resources. You're going to have to increase, increase your police department. We only have a volunteer fire department in our area. There's not too many volunteer fire departments. I cannot tell you how many times a day I see fire trucks coming from everywhere else to put out the fires. It's not fair to the, the older community and it's not fair to the younger community not to have open spaces. Yes, I know our swimming pools need to be fixed and all that. Well, you know what? More people in the community need to get involved and get out there and help. Instead of putting out money, they have, they have talents, they can find resources like anybody else. And as a former educator, it costs money for teachers, not only for you to fund the schools for the teacher's salary. But those teachers have to continue their education on top of it. Which means that they're going to demand a higher salary because they have to continually educate themselves. You have limited resources. There are places in Whitehall, like on, I don't, over, across from the CVS, there's a warehouse there that's been vacant. And I know for years that people wanted to develop it to be some kind of housing, loft apartments. You may not get a lot, but you'll get something. There's houses all through the community that are dilapidated, that could be resurrected instead of building all this new, excuse me, all this new stuff. When they built those houses off of Church Street, they tore down a historical house, the very first house that was built in Egypt. The soil in Egypt, from one, my understanding and I've done my research, the reason why it was called Egypt is the soil, soil is so rich for farming, just like it was in Egypt. So here we are, debating over open spaces. We need our farms. I don't care, it's like if you raise, if I have to give five dollars a day and I'm on a fixed income, trust me, I'm barely making it. I would rather give money to this gentleman here for his farm. Than to worry about, somebody wants to develop houses that all look the same, have no personality and are not built to the quality that I, in the house that I live in now, that was built over a hundred years ago. Is in better shape than some of the houses that are built today. All I can say is, it's better to preserve this land. We need real food, not plastic food, which is out in the market. And that's what's going to happen, they're going to have to develop food in a, in a factory in order to feed us all if we keep getting rid of our farms. So I say, give them the money to help them along. We help, we help people with food stamps, why can't we help the farm? That's all I have to say, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Pligian?
Good evening, Rob Pligian, four fifteen Oakwood Drive. I just have a question on procedural. The agenda refers to a resolution that was a public hearing and voting on ordinance about a loan from the Lafarge Fund. And that's been pushed off. And my understanding from what's been discussed so far is that this resolution would be an acknowledgement. And Whitehall would be, am I correct in concluding that would be committing three hundred seventy-five thousand towards this? Is that correct? Okay, and then where would that money be coming from? I, 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 I mean, I'm going to guess that we're going to take a loan from the Lafarge Fund, but how is that money going to be repaid to the Lafarge Fund?
That's another discussion we're going to have to have right here.
Well, I think that needs to be answered before we, I mean, maybe I'm totally out in left field, but.
I agree, I want to.
I'd like to know where this money, I mean, you know, I'm not saying anything positive or negative against this current proposal. I'm just asking a procedural issue. If we're going to loan the money from the Lafarge Fund, how is it getting repaid? Are we going to increase taxes? Are we going to take it from another project? Are we going to sell an asset of the township? I mean, what, what, how is this going to work? I don't want to, if you're done. I'm just asking a question.
Sold a parcel for five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. There's some question that the rest raised that we wanted to go through capital improvements or something that's sustainable, not assets that depreciate. When we went, when we went forward with building this, the renovations and the police station. Two thousand twelve, we've been angling to get state assistance in the form of. Here Martin, in the state budget for up to six million, they gave us the privilege to apply for a grant. Got one million dollars and I'm not sure the timing, if we, I think we committed to this building before that one million dollar grant was awarded. Before there was shovel in the ground, we were awarded one million dollars. And I believe we borrowed money from the Lafarge Fund so we could start the project to capitalize on the beneficial bids. Probably saved six or seven million dollars building the building when we did. And then if we would wait it till today. In the meantime, we applied for another grant for RACP, five hundred million. So I would think in the last month.
Five hundred thousand.
Five, five hundred thousand, I wish it was five hundred million. We got a bull in everybody's yard. Yeah. So that was one point five million dollars that we didn't see on the horizon for sure when we committed to the seventeen million dollar project. One point five million dollars hit our account in the last two months, maybe less. So there was a lot of legwork, a lot of leveraging, a lot of. Bill to get our legislators to take a look at Whitehall. Your time again, we're not a city, we're not a city, but we're developing as, if we develop it all and develop it everywhere, we're not, we're not a rural area either. So I haven't seen any community that has proven that you can develop your way to sustainability.
Well, regardless of all of that, and I don't know that, that those grants necessarily could be used for this purpose. I, I'm not an expert on that, but again, my question goes back to where is this money coming from?
That's my concern, the apparatus of this. Can we technically, and I don't, I don't want to move out of what we're discussing here, but can we technically borrow against the Lafarge Fund? For something like this? Do we have the ability to do that? The wording, the wording in that order?
Yes, absolutely.
So, so, but again.
How are we going to pay that back? Right.
And again, this is a procedural issue, this is.
Right.
What's the apparatus to get that money back into the Lafarge Fund? Do we, do we know anything? I mean, granted, Commissioner Warren, clearly you're on top of grants for the improvement of this building. Excellent. And I know that you've done a number of grants for Copley Creek Water Rest, uh, Streambank Restoration, things like that. I, I know you're all on top of that, but this is, this is out of the realm of, as we've been talking tonight, there are no other preserved farmland, preserved farms in, in the township. So we're kind of meandering down uncharted waters. And my question again, procedurally is, is there a mechanism for us to get this money? Or are the taxpayers, and it's going to be the taxpayers from Fullerton and from Hock and Dacwa and from Cementon and from Styles and from West Caddy, going to be paying for this? As a resident of Fullerton, and I heard some people eloquently speak about the ability to walk down their, out of their house two blocks and walk into farmland. I don't have that ability down in Fullerton. I have unlicensed motorcycles roaring up and down Furman Avenue all weekend that I listen to. And I have trash that I continually pick up off the back of my property that Mr. Spengan Eddie used to pick up all the time when he walked behind my house every day.
I used to watch him.
Do them all the time. Now I'm picking it up, which is fine, I have no problem with it, but just understand that this is for the township. This is not just Egypt. And the township is, the township taxpayers are going to be paying for this. And again, I'm asking a question, what's the mechanism to pay for this? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ginder, I, I've seen you very adamant, red-faced, I would even say, when it comes to borrowing funds from the Lafarge Fund. And I can remember it's ringing in my ear, we will pay this back, this is not to be taken out, this fund stays as is. Am I correct?
You're very correct, the Lafarge Fund was established as an emergent, it was actually established to take a million dollars and at that time, you were getting decent interest rates, six, seven, maybe eight percent on a million dollars at that time. And we were able to buy a piece of equipment almost every year for public works. And then of course, interest rates went down, we all know where, money was worth nothing, you know, just a two, three, four years ago. Uh, but that's what the fund was to be doing, it wasn't candy or anything else. And was also said at one time, the first time we went into it, as an emergency. Not just willingly going in there to, to kind of borrow money on, on the side so we could put it back. It was used for emergency. And I'll agree with, with when we went with the fifteen, seventeen million dollars, we went into the Lafarge Fund and, and yes, we did that to keep things moving. But at the same time, we knew we were going out in a bond issue too. So we knew the money was okay as soon as the bond issue cleared and, and everything cleared.
The instant, the current instant situation though, I don't believe that we're that clear.
I'm sorry, say that again.
With the current proposal, I don't think we're that clear with the mechanism to repay it. Am I wrong?
I, I think you could have a pretty long debate about should you be in there or should you not be in there? There's probably two sides to that. And, and I will come forth at this time and mention, I understand both sides. I was raised on a farm, I was raised in a farm community. I understand a little bit about farming, not today, that was many years ago, let me put it that way. A lot has changed. Hopefully it's gotten a little more profitable now than it, it was in the sixties. It, it was pretty rough in the sixties, but you, you know, so I understand some of this. I also understand open space. And you can define open space in many, many ways. You can just define it as a farm, preserve this green. But you can also define open space as something a municipality buys and will always stay open space and green space for the use of the residents. Things like parks, playgrounds. A great example in this township is the Iron Thin Rail Trail. A lot of open space there and we're actually getting more when Riverside Drive competes up from Allentown along the river. Going to be a lot more open space coming into this township down there for the residents to use. You can actually get out and walk and say, hey, this is ours. You know, and, and do what you want to do, throw a picnic blanket down or go sledding, do what you want to do on it. So there's a lot here, there, there, there really is, and there's a lot of emotion, a lot of feeling. And I don't believe there's a right and wrong in the whole thing. So that's kind of what I was going to say anyway.
As financing it, since the pandemic hit, recreation was probably the, the department that was kind of put on, on status quo. We still plot our roads, we still pave our roads, planning and development probably tell the. But if you look at the budgets over those years, we were under spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of that budget. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jack, but.
Oh, you're right.
It, it compounded, you know, one year I thought it was four hundred thousand dollars that we didn't spend on recreation because our pools weren't open, we weren't, we weren't doing capital improvements because construction wasn't happening. And the federal government gave us X millions of dollars. Uh, we did lose revenue tho- those years when things were shut down. But the federal government did give us millions of our tax dollars and it's, it's still our money back to the township to fill those revenue gaps. That money didn't get remarked back for recreation or preservation. We're now spending those dollars on things that we probably would be using out of the general fund, buying eight hundred thousand dollars in equipment for public works this year. We're still doing eight hundred thousand dollars of paving, so. Yes, so that's money that, it was a.
Not ARPA funds for.
Not, not a recovery. No, not a, no, pandemic money. It filled in those revenue gaps, but I'm saying that money wasn't given back to recreation to spend four hundred thousand dollars on. So we still have some of those money, we cannot spend it on open space preservation, but we are buying assets that normally would come from other sources like the general fund. Comment? I'd like to make a motion to go forward. If more comments.
Anthony Copack, three, seven, six, three, Dogwood Drive. Pretty simple to say, no.
Pretty simple to say, no farms, no food, I mean, that's pretty obvious. But since we started talking about the Lafarge Fund, since I'm kind of new to going to these meetings. Can somebody explain what the Lafarge Fund is, where the money came from, and what the purpose of that money was for?
Ginder could explain it or Mr.
The Lafarge Fund is not taxpayer money.
I'll take a shot at it.
It is taxpayer money, but it not like that we got taxes, but go ahead.
When the new quarry was opened up on Church Street from Lafarge. They wanted Bridge Street moved so that they could get as much quarry land there as possible. So Bridge Street used to come through the Lazarus Farm and connect it straight with the existing Bridge Street on Willow Street now, that was a straight run. They wanted Bridge Street moved so that they could get full access to their quarry. So at that point, Executive Salt. Realized that, okay, if we're going to move Bridge Street, we want the value, correct me if I'm wrong, Jack, we want the value of the stone. And mineral that's under that existing Bridge Street. And then at your cost, it can be moved to where it is existing today. And Lafarge agreed, and a dollar amount was set on a million dollars for the stone under that Bridge Street. That million dollars was put into what is known as the Lafarge Fund. And because at that time we were so far behind with the equipment for public works, everything was rundown and broke pretty hard. And we were behind on replacements a little bit, Jack. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, we said the interest from that million dollars, which I said earlier, we were getting seven, eight percent at that time. Paid to buy a lot of equipment every year, or at least one big item for public works every year that we could catch their equipment up. Now that goes back, that's over twenty years old.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
I was, I wasn't even a commissioner then, I was on the planning commission. So I wasn't even a commissioner there, and I'm a commissioner twenty-four years, so it goes back a while. All right, but I was on the planning commission at that time when that happened. So, and that's what was done with it, the interest was used, and that's where the money came from, and it was said, this is not candy. This will be used to buy a major piece of equipment. And then that kind of died off over the years as the interest rate shot down again. You, you couldn't buy, you weren't even getting one percent on your money, so to speak. And now it's back up again, now probably invested right, you could get five, six percent on, on a CD. On a million dollars. So that's where it came from, and those were kind of the ground rules at that time, it was not to be used as candy money.
And then, if you don't mind.
You were around, Tom, obviously, yes.
And, and then we went ahead when we're using the term borrowing it. We used it to get things started, and then it was repaid later on by either an entity that wanted to get that in. Or the state would reimburse us for things that we put the money up first. So we got the money back to get it back up to the million dollars plus.
And then every time you borrow the money, did you always have the mechanism on how to repay that before you borrowed it? Or did you pick it out down the road?
Most times it was because we knew we were getting the money back. As soon as we got the money back from the state or the federal government, it was that type of situation. The money would go right back into the Lafarge Fund. That's, most of them that I remember that we borrowed money from were that type of thing, there was never, well, we'll put back this much a month. You know, for the next, it was never anything like that, it was, this money's going to come back to us through the state or federal government. And as soon as we got it back, for example, when we brought the Pride and Farm. We, we took a portion of money to buy the, the Pride and Farm, which was open space, and still is today. The public can go in there and do what they want to do on, on, on the, on the land, and it will always be open space. It cannot be anything else other than open space, this township is not allowed to sell that land. As, as much of our other land we have is open space in the township.
And then how did you repay the money to buy that farm?
When we got the grant money back that we applied for to buy the farm, then that check straightened out what was taken out of the Lafarge Fund to, to make it whole again.
Thing with this building, once we got our RACP money, the money was restored, is restored.
Put right back into the Lafarge Funds. So that's why kind of the word emergency was used there because we needed to get some money to complete something. That was on a whole for the township and the residents of the township. That's kind of where the word emergency came from, it just wasn't spent because we were a little short to, to buy tires that year. You know, it had to be something major, major.
And again, Commissioner Warren brought up before that we actually saved money by using some of that to start the process for the building. So we saved all of what would have gone up by inflation standards and whatnot, so it, it covers itself. And, and we're damn lucky we have it.
Plus, you know, you're borrowing on a zero interest loan, which, you know, if you're looking at this project, which was about nineteen million dollars. You know, you're not paying interest to a bank that's underwriting your loan for that amount.
I mean, why does the amount have to be three hundred seventy-five thousand?
We originally asked to do a third, a third, and a third.
Right.
Lesser amount was feasible.
The initial ask was seven hundred and fifty thousand. So we settled, suggested.
Suggested, we didn't settle on nothing.
We didn't settle on anything.
As to this second right now, this board has not committed to anything.
So there, there's a million dollars in this Lafarge Fund right now. I mean, I believe over twenty years, compounding interest, you should have a lot more than that.
No, 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 we've been used buying things out of that Lafarge Fund with the interest.
Jack, what's, what's.
The interest has bought trucks and equipment and stuff over the years, so.
No, no, what's the balance as we speak, do you have a ballpark on the balance?
Point one.
And I'm not.
I'm not sure why we are calling it Lafarge because technically it's not Lafarge anymore.
It's what we titled the account in, it was, that's where we got the money, that's the account, it was just a name. We could have called it the Doggy Fund too.
Just wanted to mention, it's not Lafarge anymore. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. For, for as far as a financing standpoint, I would propose is that when we close on the property deal, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, you tell me if it's feasible or not. That we put a hundred and fifty or half directly towards this preservation opportunity. Also voting on a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and forty-nine thousand for the Copley Creek Restoration Project, that's. Budget, that money could be, that project can proceed if the grant is awarded. But when that grant comes through, that money goes back to replenish the Lafarge Fund, that's, that's a thousand dollars right there.
That money is already accounted for in grants, in our, i- it's also accounted for in the revenue side, so you're not.
The eight hundred fifty.
No, I'm talking about the cost for the Copley Creek. I mean, there was an offset in there that the Copley Creek Project is done, provided we have the revenue source to fund that.
But wasn't there like over two hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget for that project?
I don't know what was budgeted.
I think there was, and I don't know what it's actually going to come out to, but.
Yeah, and we don't know yet until we go out publicly.
For this grant. Hard phase and, and push it hard and hope that we get a hundred and forty-nine thousand, I looked at.
Hey, Mr. Snyder.
Cancel 4272 Abigail Lane. I was, uh, put my name down for courtesy of the floor because the question I had was really with procedures and how this was going to be handled tonight. And the board decided to do it this way, which is fine. If you vote on the preservation and you say yes, then you are automatically guaranteeing you're writing a check for three seventy-five. But that does not mean you're going to, that would either force you to vote yes on the Lafarge or find the money elsewhere. And there's problems, in my opinion, of way the Lafarge ordinance was written. Because when the solicitor wrote it, he said, and I got a copy of the ordinance, and you are correct, Commissioner Ginder. That the purpose of this is actually a trust that is set up in the township, it's referred to as a trust. Of, you called it Lafarge, was set as a trust. And you can use this for any unanticipated expenditures, that would be an expenditure for the township. And then you also can use it for anything else, shall be limited to those proposals authorized by the Board of Commissioners. So in theory, you can argue that there would be a reason to use it, but you, your past experience. Never use the money to give to a private individual. There's a difference when you use the money that's going to benefit every resident in this township. There's only one person that benefits financially from this money, and this is the owner of the land. Number one, number two, well, that, I, the philosophy. The philosophy different, we just agree to disagree on that. But it is a fact, one person does benefit, that person has the right to sell and do whatever he wants, he can play all kinds of, that's a choice. But he's, he's in business, we sometimes forget he is in business. And when you wrote the ordinance up, here's what you used for the reason why they could do it. You said agriculture security area of North Whitehall Township through the program will be used for the benefit of the township. And will remove future maintenance responsibilities by the township. What future maintenance responsibilities will I have of this ground to justify hitting the Lafarge Fund? You don't own the ground, you only have the right. Now, if you told me you owned the ground, a different answer, but it's only your right, so how could you use that statement to justify doing that arrangement? Because that's what it says in here today, that's what you're going to vote on. So if you want to discuss that later, what you want to do, that would be the first question I would ask. What maintenance are we going to be doing on that, on that property by the township in the future that would justify tapping into the Lafarge? And you use the term loan, and I understand how you figured that all out, and I know all the processes you did before, but how does that statement justify tapping into the Lafarge Fund?
Now, Jack, do you want to try to clarify that, or?
You as the board have the absolute authority to spend this money. So, and if, if you don't like that particular statement, you could stop it, use for the benefit of the township. I, I heard at previous meetings, and I think we got, I, there was some information from the county. Discusses when these sort of preservation easements happen because the land isn't developed. There is less maintenance of roads and other, other township assets in the area. Again, I, I don't. I don't think that's fundamental to this ordinance, and if, if you didn't like that last clause. It, it, it doesn't need to be there. I will point out that as the board, you have, you have the authority to spend this money. I, to me, and I thought perhaps what Mr. Snyder was going to point to, and what I would point to, to you here is the last. Actually enacted, which says you're going to borrow the money, but also says that you will determine how it's. That's what I thought Mr. Snyder was going to talk about.
I didn't have that part of my, my, my arrangement, so, but you're right.
So to me, I, I would point out to you, I, I, that's, that I, and I, I think I heard Mr. Warren talking about that, there, there were some other points there. At least as drafted here, while it doesn't require you to itemize it here tonight, it does say that you will determine.
I would suggest at the minimum, because of the way you're approaching this, that you vote on whether you want to preserve or not, but change the ordinance to be contingent upon how you're going to fund it. So in the event that you cannot agree with the funding, should you agree to do it, that there's at least a mechanism to go back and figure out how the heck we're going to fund this thing. As once you agree to pass the ordinance as is, then you've obligated yourself to that process, if I'm saying that correctly. And there is no out, you've committed the three hundred seventy-five K. And there's no out based on this order, is that correct, Mr. Solicitor?
Well, I had suggested, and it was part of the reason for timing, that this is a special meeting. Because there was the opportunity to get these resolutions on the June agenda. There was not an opportunity to get the ordinance on the, the June agenda. And my suggestion from the beginning was that the board should consider the. Authorize spending the money, my recommendation is you need to authorize where. But they are two different, they're two different, they're two different legislative acts, and I, I can't tell you, you only do one and not the other. It's simply my recommendation that you need to, you need to consider them at this.
I would like to see that tonight, when you do this, that number one, you vote on the preservation. Number two, make a contingent upon the funding of it. And number three, have a, then you're going to vote if you're going to take it, a lot of Flarge or not, he's a hundred percent correct, you have the availability to do that. And then the third part, figure out how you're going to pay it back and where it's coming from. That's all. Thank you.
A real estate transfer tax, how far, what, what is our revenue versus plan for this year?
Actually, real estate transfers have been way down this year compared to last year, which was.
Last year.
Which was an outlier, I, I think.
Is there an order that we should be doing this that you recommend? It's listed on the agenda simply because our agendas typically have ordinances before resolutions. I, legally, it doesn't make a difference. My, my advice is the same as it was a minute ago, and it's the reason they're all on the same agenda. That if you're going to authorize spending the money, you're going to need to authorize where the money comes from. Right, and I, I would look, I'm sorry to put, put you on the spot, Jack, but I don't, I, I have. My understanding is that the consequence of authorizing spending the money, if you don't authorize borrowing it from the Lafarge Fund, is that the deputy mayor is going to have to.
Find three hundred seventy-five thousand.
Exactly, find three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars somewhere else, and that isn't going to be easy.
No. I think that the way that you're handling this now would be the appropriate way. Don't authorize the spending, there's no need to borrow from the Lafarge Fund or any other place in the township. That's why I changed this, so we were putting the cart before the horse. Right. Any more questions from the floor?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
We authorize the spending of the money, then.
Yeah.
Vote on it and. Do you have that discussion first about where it's coming from?
Well.
You're going to vote on.
Yeah, it is, it's complicated. Sure, Mr. Winehoffer, come on up. Yes, you do, sorry.
Jack Winehoffer, four, five, four, seven, Struis Street, Whitehall. First of all, I appreciate you guys trying, you know, this whole idea in Lee High County versus Nertham. I kind of envisioned these kind of things happening, and it's tough for any township. First of all, Mr. Snyder is a little bit disillusioned all that, yes, I'm a businessman, but I think you guys heard me say that. Our interest is costing us fourteen thousand dollars a month right now. So even if we got the, the money from the county and the money from the township, it would be cut to seven thousand a month. We had to react quickly or lose the sale, so we had to finance the total two point five million. So that all being said. We still would have that seven thousand a month, which the profit we would make in a year farming this property would be roughly thirty-five thousand a year. Not even half of the interest. So, yes, I'm a businessman, but I give a damn because I'm trying to preserve this property. And open space is a little bit different, Mr. Ginder, when you're talking parks versus farmland. Parks is great, we need them, but you also need policemen, you need more costs. Open space is going to save the township money. Any way you look at it, it might not be today, you got to come up with it, but nobody's making a profit on this. And if I kept this farm for ten years, I'd probably have a hard time finding somebody who's going to give us one point two million for it. Even if you rented it out to a farm, a farmer, you might get twenty thousand a year. So you're still not getting, who, who in their right mind would. So, you're still not getting, who, who in their right mind would invest that kinda money? It's, it's just about caring, you know, and, and this is what it comes down to. It's a partnership between us, the township, and the county. Everything they're preserving, you know, this is where it came from. If people don't give a damn, it's gonna go away. And without the help, we can't do it. That's what it comes down to. So, I understand you're gonna have some difficulty figuring out your, your resources, but, you know, I appreciate what you're doing.
Jack, before I ask for a motion on the public hearing, on the resolution, can we discuss how we will pay the fund back before we get into a motion?
Yes.
Does anyone wanna comment on how we could possibly pay this back, on what, what revenue source we could use to replenish the, the Lafarge Fund?
I did make the suggestion that the 850,000 dollar proceed we're getting from the sale of the land across- For money, I'm not sure how much of that you have committed for existing projects, but I likely see at least 150,000, or- Go towards the purchase of this. And start applying for a grant here for the restoration project that will probably-
I, I totally get where you're coming from. The only problem I have with that is, we can't go under assumptions. Money's money.
But-
I mean, hard dollars are hard dollars. We can't assume that we're gonna capture so much from a grant, or, we can't assume we're gonna-
I also, you know, just, I mean, I appreciate the suggestion, but that was open space that we sold. To me, it's kind of like we're-
It was more valuable, really.
I'm not saying we, it was the wrong move, but I, I just think we're kinda spinning our wheels in by doing that.
The other thing you have to remember is, in your capital budget, there's probably a million dollars in sales of fixed assets, which rolls in not only the Columbia Street, but the sale of the police station. So those monies are earmarked for storm sewer projects and every other thing that we have in the capital reserve fund. So, after we've adopted that budget, you've already committed the funds and the revenues that are generated throughout the course of the year for certain projects. So, it's not like you can just shift your gears, I mean, certainly you have the right to do that, say, you know, we're gonna cut back on this to do that.
Right.
But-
That budget was balanced based upon the assumption that we were going to be receiving that funding for the sale of the assets.
Jack, you feel like the Lafarge Fund is the-
Well, absolutely, if you're going to do that, because then you control our fate on the, on how to pay back the 375.
We still don't have the, like, I haven't heard anybody say tonight, what would the mechanism be to return that money?
And, and that's the unknown. We don't, we don't have a revenue source to replace that at this point. That's the problem here.
Well-
You're gonna have to use tax dollars to, to reclaim.
Well, it depends, I mean, you're gonna have-
Use the general fund for, for paying back the, the terms of the, you know, however we're gonna pay back the loan. For 2024, that's not, shouldn't be a problem, as I see the picture now. Our capital, capital improvements project in 2026 has an Egypt pumper, has a bunch of big-ticket items in it, replacing a paver and things, so it may be more difficult then, but, you know, you guys have to make the assessment of the cost of this and paying it back. I mean, we can react, however, I mean, the shorter the term, obviously, the more beneficial it would be for us.
I was under the impression the sale of that land and the sale of that police building were to go to capital projects.
We never made a decision.
We never made a decision.
No, that is-
But it, but it, we did discuss that.
You're gonna buy dump trucks at 220,000 a pop.
We, we did discuss, you know, should probably be looking at capital things, because remember, when you, when you look down the future here, we, we're talking about increasing the recreation budget, because it's been a little underfunded the last couple of years. But we have a recreation department not working, not even working in their own building. They're here, they're there, they're everybody else. We, we've gotta consider getting that recreation department in their own building at this point somewhere, somehow. You know, that's not gonna happen next year, I don't believe either, but, but it's an expense coming at us. A huge expense, that'll, that'll be just, you know, a few million dollars, it's not gonna be, be 5 million, I don't think, but, but they need some kind of a building that, that they can work out, and plus you, these playgrounds need an awful lot of work, awful lot of work, and I think we, we all agreed on that. It's just gone, just something that needs done. So there, there, there are money restraints here, there's no question about it, we're, we're just not flush with cash. And, and we're sitting on a 15 million dollar bond issue right now. I think we're actually over that with the fire truck, right, with the aerial?
Oh, yeah, but, I mean, we know what-
That service is fixed, right.
Yeah.
Right, that service is fixed.
And that's, and that's if nothing goes bad, you know, we're sitting down there with a, a six-foot stormwater pipe south of 22, that we have no idea where the future of that is, yeah, even though we've gone out and looked at different grants to try and cover it all and everything else, and we are getting the, the short place repaired, but, but, you know, we know that's a liability we have down there. And, and that can, that can, that was a surprise to us when that happened. I don't mean to beleaguer this and go on, but I mean, you know, in my opinion, we gotta look at what we're doing here with money. 375,000 is a lot of money.
She wanted to comment for one second.
Just a quick comment. Donna Wright, again, the High County Frontline Preservation. I don't know if it makes a difference in the conversation or not, we're not looking at a settlement happening for this farm until probably December of this year.
That's, that's all relative, though. We still have to come up with the money.
So I wasn't sure where it fell within the budget discussion or anything else, so that, I just wanted to point that out. Okay, and worse comes to worse, although it may not be as favorable for all the Winehofer's, is we could considerably do a payment also in 2024 that came from the township. So in other words, the county could pay him this year the 930,000 plus or minus, and you could make a payment to him in 2024. Okay? It may not help him as quickly with, you know, that much money be shorted, but we do have flexibility in that we can do that. It doesn't have to be all paid at one time, it can be an installment. Okay? No, it would be one, it would be a lump.
Lump sum, she's just saying we could carry it into 2024.
You could carry it into 2024, and you could do that, or you could do, again, it's not gonna be as favorable for him for his bottom line, for making his payments that he's concerned about, but you could do a payment of part of it in 2024 and part of it in 2025. I don't know that that makes any difference for where you're looking for money, but that is also an option. Okay? I can do that with the, with the agreements that we have.
Is the reason I asked? Is this gonna be much further?
No, you can, you can let me know about how you want it, I mean, you guys probably have to figure that out, depending on what you're doing, but you could let me know that much later, like a, a month or two down the lines. I would feel more comfortable knowing that you, yes, in fact, wanted to approve 375,000 to be spent toward this. How you wanted to divide that up or keep it as a lump sum, I'm more than happy to wait for a month so you could table it and have more discussion. Okay? But I, I need to have a verification that that would be the total that would be spent. Does, does that make sense to you? Only because of paperwork and things that I have to do on my end.
Ask this question maybe a few hours ago now, but worst-case scenario, and maybe the Winehofer's might be the ones who have to-
That you'd have to ask them, so, I'll be careful.
Well, it's not gonna help, you know. Good money keeps flowing out, and obviously, the faster we can get something in place, what can I say? But I, I understand your situation, it's, it's not, not gonna be something easy, you guys gotta work on it, you know? Yeah, it'll set us back, there's no doubt about it. We couldn't take it out of our business at the time, because we needed cash flow to keep that running, so we had to finance it. So, we're just trying to cut that down.
What would a setback mean? Would that mean-
Well, I mean, it's, it's financial, I mean, yeah, it's gonna take money out of the, out of the operation to try to, to keep going, you know? Farming is, is a business, and, you know, we, we have a lot of, you plant the, you plant the crops in the spring, you take a million dollars out of the bank just to plant it, and you hope you get a million dollars back out of the ground, and maybe you have some left over. But, you know, we can't max ourselves any, any further. So, and again, what Donna says, if you guys can come up with some kinda way of thinking that, you say, well, we're gonna do this, but we might have to need a little bit of time, I, I could live with that, but if you think it's not gonna happen, you know, I would need to know that, too, because then we might have to go a different direction.
It's complicated, because we have to come up with an apparatus on how we're gonna pay this money back if we borrow it from the Lafarge Fund.
I understand.
And before we can make a motion approving it, we've gotta make sure that we know the hard numbers and exactly where the funding's coming from and how it's gonna be paid back.
It's no different from what we're going through, exactly the same thing.
Let me ask you another question, I don't know if this is- If, like, you know, we were to put up the money now-
I think it's just clouding things. I mean, the mon- money is money, no matter where it comes from. The thing with the Lafarge Fund is that you control that, and, I mean, we've gone sometimes a dozen years before we even, you, that, that fund has just sat there gaining a half a percent, 3%, 2% interest, so, you know.
Well, I, I would propose that we use some of that money from the sale of the land today, whatever's the balance is that we commit, that we're putting stuff every year in the capital budget for improvement, stormwater management, some of the MS4 stuff, my personal opinion is, is that we're being penalized for a lot of the purchase of retail, contributing it, but the resident taxpayer is, in a sense, eh, as well. But we go back to where we spent that 120,000, because we couldn't wait a couple months until the spring season to complete that project, there was not one question asked about spending that money. Not one asked, was the only person asked questions when we debated that, going forward with that project, and then get it done this year, instead of waiting for two months till we find out if we got the grant, we just spent the money, so. Put 100,000 in the budget every year, or some amount.
Well, the only thing, too, to realize is that, that sale of that land is not gonna be consummated probably this year, may, at the end of this year, maybe.
It will be close, it'll probably be.
So we won't have those funds.
Either the end of the year or beginning of next year.
Police building's not gonna be any sooner either.
No, no.
We've waited, though, in the past for monies to come in to replace-
This isn't like, brand new, I mean, the, the last time with the bridge going over the Jordan down there-
But you think it's accounts receivable and accounts payable, it's simple, yeah.
But I mean, it's not like, oh, well, we have to have it, oh, next month, kinda, it, it doesn't happen like that, so.
We need some concept, though, that's what we need, just a concept on where this is gonna come from. Good. We could do whatever we wanna do, but the money has to be paid back.
And, and the deal is, they're looking at, this is impacting them as much as it is the township, but it's impacting them a little bit more percentage-wise. And, and I understand where they have to come up with what's going on now, or, this could all be, we just wasted a lot of time just sitting here talking about really nothing. I mean, the whole idea here is to get what's going on, and they're the ones that will make that decision. If we say no, they can just say, well, hey, highest bidder.
Yeah. The other thing, too, is a couple years ago, we had in the budget 400, I think it was 400, 450,000 for a front-end loader. We committed to buying that apparatus, budget. In the meantime, we applied for a recycling grant, we were in the queue for getting, and we got several hundred thousand dollars, I thought it was 400,000, half the price, that was two-
It was, I think, the, the front-end loader was about 165, 170, and we got half that, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was, I thought it was a bigger number than the budget.
Dump trucks are more than front-end loaders.
All right, let's, let's come to a consensus here on what we wanna do moving forward.
I would like to move either, move the Lafarge Fund first, or Resolution 7.
We would do this, the resolution for, resolution doesn't pass, there's no sense to do the-
Right. Right. So, do we wanna take a motion on the Resolution 3266, approving the money?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a second?
Yep.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution Number 3266. We have a second. Please poll the Board.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginder?
No.
Commissioner Slonaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Charles?
Aye.
Commissioner Etia?
No.
And President Marx?
No.
Okay. There's, I don't see the sense of going ahead then, and going on Bill.
If I could make a suggestion, a tie loses, but, maybe I should make this suggestion. I believe to make an educated decision here with the people's money is to know where the money's coming from, to pay back the money we're obligated to pay back. That's why my vote went the way it went. I think the problem with this whole process was time constraints. It always seems to be time constraints. It's frustrating, you know, public's not private sector. I believe if we had more time to deal with this, we could have found the apparatus, and we would have solid numbers knowing how we could pay this back. But, like Mr. Ginder said, that fund was established for a certain purpose and for emergency situations. I don't consider this an emergency, I apologize to the Winehofer family, I understand, you know, where you're coming from. That doesn't mean that this can't be recon, and I hate to be that guy, to, to reconstitute this, you still have the ability to go to the county for now, and because of the time constraints, we can talk to Mr. Myers, we have an upcoming budget season, it's right around the corner, and maybe we can find the apparatus to move this forward. I, I'm sorry, I just, yes.
Donna Wright, again, Frontline Preservation. I understand what you're saying. Let me back up a second. Please do consider, though, still following through on Resolution 3267, because that does not require, that's authorizing the Whitehall Township to be within the security area. That doesn't require any financing from your end. I understand on budget, what is normally your timeline for, for your township for budgeting? What, when do you discuss it, and you have to have it-
October, Nov- October, November, it has to be approved by the New Year.
Right, and you would, you don't do the final voting until December, or do you vote finally in November?
December, late December.
You do December, okay.
You vote November. In November, we generally vote on the budget.
You, you usually have it then, okay? You've done like-
That way, that way, if there's problems or questions on the vote in November, we have December to clear it before the end of the year.
Okay, that, okay, that's what I wanted to-
Gives us that extra month.
How you did it here.
Am I right? Yeah.
Yeah, you're correct.
Yeah, okay. Can we, on that, let me go back and talk with the Winehofer's? Let me go back and find out, because I do have the ability to encumber the funds that we have from the county for the Winehofer's, okay, for, for a payment in 2024, if needed. If that gives you guys time to talk about budget-wise and circle back around to this. I wanna talk to them, though, so to your point, not make it a closed, done deal, never to be spoken of again. So, go back to them, and I'll be in communication either- So go back to them, and I'll be in communication either with Solicitor Gross or whomever you wish me to talk to here. About how we could move forward in a positive manner to see if we can't get them some funds. Does does that work for you guys? I don't, I don't want to.
Dr. Seid.
I'm glad you brought it up, because everybody's gonna mention it. My understanding is that. Resolution thirty-two sixty-seven to put these six parcels into the agricultural security area, if you don't consider and pass that. They wouldn't be eligible for the county money.
Okay.
Right.
Got you.
So I I.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll vote on that next. I'll ask for a motion.
Important for you to decide if you want to do that.
Right, and then it's just a matter of, I would like to go back and talk, have some serious discussion with the winehoifers about where they are in the world and where we are in the world. And how maybe we can still continue this and have a partnership somehow to have money from you guys, okay, how you can fund it. And to that point, thank you so much for coming up with three hundred and seventy-five thousand as a total. If something less is more feasible or more stomachable, as the point may be, and more easy to fund back, and that requires budget discussion. I don't want to close the door on it. I want to be able to see if we can't come to something together, because I know this was kind of thrown at you guys. There was a lot of things that caused delays in conversation. Where we've actually been talking with winehofer since last year. So it hasn't been able to come to you guys and have a legitimate conversation as well as it should have. So I don't want to just shut the door on them. I don't want to shut the door on you guys. I would like to see this move forward to to make it a win-win for everybody. So at this point, if maybe, I I'd like to see it more as a table than a straight off. No, it's never gonna happen if that works for you guys.
And and that's why I said what I just said, well.
So I'm just asking for sure if we can pass the act of security area, that's that's a no cost, that's a really a no-brainer for you guys, and then.
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move right on to that.
I can just say quick, I could really kind of want to reiterate what Joe said, what.
Yeah.
I know, I don't want to belabor the point, but this got thrown at us really quick, and I'm trying to figure out what's going on.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Hours ago, it's good, maybe it is good that we had a special meeting, because otherwise, we would have been here past midnight.
I mean, to be perfectly frank, I saw Mr. Winehofer on Election Day at the Egypt Fire Company, and I was unaware of this. Until he brought it up, and I said, it wouldn't be appropriate for me to talk to him about this, but he would have to contact the mayor.
Well, that's what I've been trying to get, and I have to apologize. My director was here at the last meeting, I think, and she came forward on that, and and I have to confess, I'm rather a mouth. So I apologize, but it also doesn't hurt that I've been a supervisor myself for eighteen years, so I know what you guys want to hear and what you need to talk about. Where Diane really is only on the planning commission, and she knows intimately this program, but she doesn't know how to answer the questions that you guys really need to have answered. So I apologize for the delay on that, but I really don't want to see this door slammed shut on you, but I also don't want to keep us here much longer because it's been a very long meeting.
We just need open communication.
Yeah, I know, absolutely, and so, I mean, I'm I'm sort of the point person at our office for this, so please feel free to contact me at any time for this. But I do want to talk to the winehoifers, and I will get back to you guys to see what we can do to try and make this work, even if it ends up being twenty twenty-four, okay?
Fair enough.
But let's keep it open so we can communicate, and I'll even talk to Attorney Gross because that seems, he seems to be able to put stuff on your agenda too quickly, okay?
Thank you.
So then I would make the motion to pass along resolution thirty-two sixty-seven to enter Whitehall Township into the. Agricultural security area.
Yes. Do I have a second? I have a second. Please poll the board.
Wait a second here, you guys. I know some of these people know I'm here on a regular basis. This board does this on a regular basis, where you sit down and you put agendas on, and I've talked to Joe Marx about this directly. And we don't know the facts. Have you seen the document that you're approving?
Yes.
From North Whitehall Township?
I have.
You have. Has everybody else seen that document?
You mean, their conservation plan?
Yeah.
It's on their website.
I didn't ask that.
I have seen it, yes.
You see, has each member been given a copy and reviewed it in advance before you vote on this tonight? Because I wasn't supplying that information. I requested the information, and it was not made available to me. So if you received it and you reviewed it as a procedure point of view, I'm perfectly fine, but I've sat here in many meetings where people voted stuff and didn't see it until the night of or reviewed the document.
That's why I asked her a couple pointed questions about it.
So did you, did each one of you see it and review it?
I did.
I did.
And I have no problem with that's what you're voting on, okay?
Can you please follow the board?
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Charles?
Aye.
Commissioner Atiyah?
Yes.
Whatever.
Commissioner Sloniker, aye. Commissioner Ginder?
Yes.
And President Marx?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Resolution passes, six ayes, zero nays.
Mr. Gross, Bill number twenty-five dash twenty twenty-three, we're not authorizing a loan from the Lafarge Fund. Can we just table that for tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless someone wants to make a motion on it, but I, it doesn't sound like you do. I thought he needs a new car.
Okay, with that being said, we're gonna table that, and we're gonna move on to resolution number thirty-two sixty-eight, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority. For acceptance of a watershed restoration and protection program grant.
I'll make that motion.
Warren? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
There may be some discussion on this. Anybody have anything to say on this?
Yeah, I I do. When we approved Phase One Copley Creek Restoration Project, I did not see the map before we voted on it. The the fifty-foot buffer on either side of the creek goes all the way up to the bridge and encroaches the walking trail that people use. To get from the farm up to the trail and also from the trail down onto the Copley Creek, and I was hoping that we could at least keep some of that area open. As part of this project, I did not see a no-mo zone, at least I didn't, the way I interpret the map, it didn't appear that. The area all around the bridge on the northern side was just gonna be.
I thought there was some crosshatching on that print, though, and I didn't know, it didn't give you.
L O D is limit of disturbance. That's.
Okay, see, I didn't, it doesn't give you a breakdown.
But there are tree plantings. I guess what I want is I want some accessible area to be maintained. We're not gonna kill res- accessible recreation areas because we're trying to fill. An MS four for impervious cover from retail. There is a trail that goes to the park that I'd like to see that at least maintain, and if we can balance it out, you know, maybe even extend the riparian buffer a little longer.
That's what I said. I don't know why it can't be skewed, so you have access to those points.
But I would like the area immediately down, the people walk down this, I took a photo last Saturday of a family down there enjoying the stream. I don't want, I don't want to see that be truncated by three-foot tall grass like the other side.
I think it's just common sense when the contractor does the plannings to, you know, skew things a little.
But I, you know, if it's, if our grant application or the is written in, or the permit is written that it has a little flexibility in it, I'd still like to see some of it maintained. I'm in favor. Of areas that are not used by the public to be.
I mean, another counter argument is we have sanitary sewer facilities that go through there, okay? Now, I know none of it's affected directly, but there are some areas where it is, and, you know, once again, we need access to those facilities.
But it didn't say you want no-mo zone. It did show shrubbery and trees, just as long as there's access around that bridge.
Right.
And then, too, I think there, that bridge has the potential for. Repair work in the future, whether we apply for a multimodal grant to repair that bridge, we have to do something, and so we don't want to put some. Something close in there and then end up having to.
Rip it out.
So I think that would be kind of like a look-forward argument to keep some of that area accessible. Sorry, the beleaguer the issue, but if you go down there, you can't even walk down the steps. You walk into three-foot-high grass.
Any more questions on this? Any questions from the floor? Can you please poll the board?
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Sloniker, aye. Commissioner Charles?
Um, aye.
But Commissioner Fisher?
Commissioner Atiyah?
Yes.
I guess I'm Fisher Charles.
Commissioner Ginder?
Yes.
And President Marx?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six ayes, zero nays.
And this is the resolution to apply for not to accept the loan.
Correct, okay.
Because I thought we applied for a grant last year.
We submitted lots of grants. I mean, for storm sewer alone, I mean, most of those are with the Army Corps. And we're still waiting.
Tom, his last name is Fisher.
Charles.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sir Charles.
No, I'm just, hey, I'm working with limited resources here. My brain.
This last comment I would make is, you know, we sold that land, a sliver of land in Columbia, the Garza Road, for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Five hundred and eighty.
Five hundred and eighty, boy. You should have corrected me from the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
Because we had, we had, like, we had it right there. But they were looking at using that land for a training ground facility, and it's very valuable, so there's some public benefit from that.
Well, they're gonna build the infrastructure to get us to the quarry, so there's major public benefit there.
Look at that as a good investment, but I do see it as, hey, we can get this money and fix all these pools if we sell it all.
The county's building some of that.
Yeah, I understand. So it's a game of tides. It's, we're losing, because it is open space that we're going to lose. It's farmed right now. All right, thanks for belaboring, or thanks for letting me deleverry of.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Mr. Charles did that.
Oh, Mr. Atiyah. You can't do both. You can't be both to me.